Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. To begin our session today, we are going to please all stand for the national anthem. That is it? A very special welcome to every one of you who are present here this evening to be part of Flabot Live. And I also want to welcome those who are viewing on live stream. This afternoon's session is timely in that it is just about the time when we have had a government in office for some three years. I cannot say that we can celebrate the anniversary. I commence your it with Saint Lucians, and so I will do the appropriate thing and to say to Saint Lucians, accept my sympathy for the hardships you have had for the last three years. Today, on our program, we are going to have a number of speakers who are going to deal with a number of pertinent issues. But before I start, let me acknowledge the presence of the leader of the opposition, the leader of the United Workers' Party, the chairman, that is Honorable Alan Schasney, the chairman, Mr. Theron Prudent, deputy political leaders Guy Joseph and Senator Dominic Ferry. I would also like to acknowledge Senators Herod Stanislas and Farapolius. And I also want to issue a special welcome to some special faces that I see here today. As an insider, I am very excited to see some of your faces, the new faces, young faces. And I suspect some of you will be doing battle to rescue Saint Lucia in the upcoming general elections. Welcome to you, a very special welcome to you. For today's proceedings, I am your host, Spider Montut. Before I call on our first speaker, I want to ask a few questions. Are you better off today than you were three years ago?
No!
Three years ago, your dollar gave you four bread. Today, your dollar can only afford two bread. I just want to point out to you what your government has done to you. Do you feel safer in Saint Lucia today than you did four years ago?
No!
Or three years ago, rather.
No!
I just want to remind you that in the last two years, in the last two years, you have a government who has presided over record numbers of homicides. In 2023, we had seventy-five Saint Lucians who lost their lives through violent crime. And as if that was not good enough, it was repeated again. But in 2022, and as if that wasn't good enough, it was repeated again in 2023. I do not want to talk about 2024 because I fear what I see inside and where this is going. Despite the fact that we are looking at record numbers of Saint Lucians, especially young men losing their lives in this country, we have, how many ministers we have responsible for crime? We have an attorney general. We have a prime minister who is a minister of national security. We have a minister responsible for crime prevention. We have a minister of home affairs. When these incidents happen, you do not hear a word from any of them. You do not hear a word from any of them, my dear fellow Saint Lucians. That is an indication of the value that they place on your life. And ladies and gentlemen, I just want to remind you, I don't know about you, but I paid sixteen, thirteen dollars and ninety-five cents for a gallon of gas three years ago. Today, today, a while ago, I paid sixteen dollars and fifty cents. Are you better off today than you were three years ago?
No!
The government claim that they are putting people first. I must confess that I finally understood what they meant by that. When they want to extort money, you're the first that they pick on. When they want to increase taxes, you're the first that they pick on. They are putting themselves first for the good things in this country, but you come first when it comes to extorting money out of you. I want to ask Saint Lucians to examine themselves. Now, today, I want to say, we all recognize that a gross mistake was made. I am pleased to announce that I wasn't part of that mistake. But I, but I do not, I do not want to condemn those who made the mistake, given the fact that they have realized their mistake. Always give people a chance to correct their mistake. You have an opportunity now to correct your mistake. The conditions existing in this country today, when it comes to the economy, when it comes to employment, when it comes to cost of living, when it comes to security, when it comes to your freedom, when it comes to democracy, is dismal. But ladies and gentlemen, I am no bearer of gloom and doom. I am here to say to you, do not give up hope. The United Workers' Party is there to the rescue. We have a prime minister who said that he was the most readied leader to take over the mantle in Saint Lucia. Talk is cheap. Not this days, anyway. If the 2.5% that Digicel is putting on your bill, talk has become expensive. But it is not about talk, it is about performance. People say any and everything during a campaign, but when it comes to implementation, that is where the proof is in the pudding. And so, the most readied prime minister has turned out to be the biggest disaster that Saint Lucia has ever faced. The Saint Lucia Labour Party has proven to be the biggest calamity that Saint Lucia has experienced. And I say so, though I wasn't there for the Wawin Poisson disaster, I know about it. I was there for Tomas, I was there for Debbie, I was there for Alan. The worst disaster that Saint Lucia has ever experienced is what we have experienced in the last three years under the Saint Lucia Labour Party. And I know sometimes we do not appreciate what we have. And it is not our fault because human beings naturally always aspire and hope for the better. And so, when we had the Honorable Alan Michael Schasney as our prime minister, we took things for granted. In less than three years, I remember when the UWP came into office, one of the main topics of the cabinet was unemployment, 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 because it was high. We had unemployment that was about twenty-five percent, and we quickly forget those things. In less than three years, under Alan Schasney, with the United Workers' Party, it went down to fifteen percent. I'm not interested in any politician's talk. I am interested in their performance. Then came one of the worst disasters that has hit the world, at least in my lifetime. Something nobody anticipated, nobody predicted, COVID-19 pandemic. And honestly, I personally had my fears. Because I saw people who were about my age, who are very close to me, who are my friends, who are in my neighborhood, die of COVID-19. We heard stories about countries where containers, refrigerated containers were being used to store bodies. And nobody knew the answer. But I have to say this, I'm not one who is into flattery. I'm not one who is just into singing people's praises, but give jackets jacket. When praise is due, you have to give praise. I want to thank Alan Schasney and the United Workers' Party for, for the handling of COVID-19. I could never forget, I was so proud when I heard that Saint Lucia was among the leading countries in the world for its handling, for its handling of COVID-19. Now, what I just said there is talk, let's deal with reality. Throughout the heights of the pandemic, we had about eighty Saint Lucians who perished. That was remarkable. We did what we had to do, opened Victoria as a special hospital and everything. We, we had, we, we had the curfews, we had zoning of the country, we did everything we had to do. There were only eighty Saint Lucians who lost their lives. Now, if you think that is nothing, and if you think that is not special, what happened immediately after the United Workers' Party was removed in office? You end up to four hundred Saint Lucians losing their lives. Government, government is not about talk. Government is about management, government is about governance, government is about implementation, government is about delivering. As we go along, I will remind you, lest you forget, Saint Lucia, there is a better way. There is a better party. There is a better government. You have a better leader. And let me just say to you, again, the things that I am proud of as a Saint Lucian. Coming out of COVID-19, when our economy was decimated, no tourism, no, nothing, no importation, nothing taking place in this country, our economy was shut down. I asked myself, how are we going to come out of this in a short space of time? Even though Alan Schasney and the United Workers' Party were the only people in the world who believed tourism would come back to where it was. They believed, and you know why they believed? Because they have vision. And, and we brought back Saint Lucia's economy to the point where in the entire Karikom region, we were the number-two performing economy. Now, that can easily be taken for granted. That can easily be taken for granted. Let me tell you why we were not number one. Guyana just discovered oil. There was oil in Guyana, so, I mean, obviously, you know, they didn't feel the full brunt of the COVID-19, and they recovered quickly. But why did Saint Lucia? What did Saint Lucia discover for us to be number two? A good leader and a great party. So today, I say to you, people do make mistakes, but people have to correct their mistakes. And we are now on the verge of accepting that enough is enough. After three years, we have given enough time for this government to prove themselves. They have not done so, and so we say it is time to go. And so today, we are here not only to mourn the losses that we have experienced and suffered in the last three years, but to bring you hope that there is a better day, a brighter day is coming under the torch of the United Workers' Party. And so, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call on our first speaker, a party stalwart who has been with us through thick and thin. And if I ever wondered whether what Stevenson King did wasn't a betrayal, wasn't treachery, I watch where Brenda Edwin stands today. And so, ladies and gentlemen, I want to salute this lady from Castris North, Brenda Edwin, who decided to stand on the side of principle and who is showing values because she knows that it is not about Stevenson King, it is about the United Workers' Party, the party that has served Saint Lucia the best. And so, Brenda, I would like to call you to address our gathering. Welcome to the podium.
Good afternoon, everyone. I know some of you knew me from long, and some of you just getting to know me. Today, I want, before I say welcome to Castris North, before I say welcome to Castris North, I want to say that yeah, before I am a Saint Lucian, I am a woman of God. And when I was called, when I was called to make this statement today, I sat in the presence of God and asked him, what is it you want me to say today? So I'm not going to say what I want to see, I'll say what I want to see after another question. But I think it is imperative today to hear what the Lord has to say. Because the Lord has a plan for this party. He has an agenda going forward for this party. And the scripture, I'm going to back it up by scripture, Psalm 133. And it's part of our name. Behold, how good and pleasant it is when brethren dwell together in unity. It is like a precious oil upon the head, running down to the beard, the beard of Aaron, the beard of Aaron, the beard of Alan, Alan, running down to the edge of his garments. It is like the dew of herman descending upon the mountains of Castris North and coming down to this, to the rest of the island. For there the Lord commanded the blessing. There is a blessing coming, but we have to be in unity. We have to be in one accord. We have to be together. It's not by might, it's not by power, but it's by the Spirit of God. Now, before we go forward, a lot of people might say, why are we talking about unity? What, when Spider spoke, what happened to us? We, as a party, we all failed. Whether we want to, we can blame Alan, we can blame Steve, we can blame, we failed. And, and I'm saying so because the Lord brought me back to Daniel. And when the people of Israel failed, when Daniel was praying, he said, we all failed, we all sinned, we. So for us to come together, we have to forget what happened in the past, and let's go forward. Let us go forward. And stop pointing fingers here and there. Let us just go forward, because if we say, if I, Brenda, say I have no sin, I'm a liar, and I'm making God a liar. So I came here to say what the Lord told me to see. And I want to welcome you into Castris North. And when I led the branch in Castris North, it was a prayerful branch, we did nothing without prayers. And so, when the move was happening, I asked the parliamentary rep, what are your plans? What are your goals? What is your agenda? Because I know, as I said, the branch didn't belong to him, the branch belonged to the party. And things happen, but going forward, let us remember, unity is strength. Unity, we must come together and we must work together. In fact, all of us are faults, all of us are weaknesses. But we have a battle ahead of us. We have a battle ahead of us, and we must come together to fight that battle. Amen? Welcome to Castris North.
Thank you very much, Brenda. And you know, they say time is a great revealer. And there are those who call themselves patriots, you know, because they think we are idiots. But time has revealed to us exactly who is who and what is what. And so, we have been fooled in the past, but you can fool some of the people some of the time, but you can never fool all of the people all of the time. And so, when the light of the Flabot shines, we will expose all the hypocrisy. And those who pretended to be what they were not, and now that we are seeing the true colors, we know the truth. The truth has come to light, and we'll be guided by that light. Ladies and gentlemen, all is not lost. We have lost some time. We have suffered some regression in terms of our progress, but all is not lost. A little history. The United Workers' Party is always there after SLP ruins Saint Lucia to perform the repairs. We have done it before, I want to remind you, of 7982. We have done it before. Well, there may be other times, but I'm talking about the history that I am familiar with. I'm not that old, I'm a young, growing boy still. So we have done it before. We are going to do it again. With your help, with, well, like Brenda said, in unity, we are going to march back to the path of progress and development and bring Saint Lucia to where it was again. Today, we have the unenviable reputation of having a government of rogues. And I say so with no apologies. We have a government of rogues. I just watched a program last week where two sitting government ministers are being accused of blackmail. In case you don't appreciate it, blackmail is a crime in Saint Lucia. Two sitting government ministers, and I mentioned that on Meet the Opposition on Thursday. And of course, one of the culprits, Richard Frederick, has his program on Thursday evening. His response was that I, along with thirteen other people, or thirteen people including me, tried to disrupt his program last, the week before by making video calls to his program. So, I mean, I do not want to highlight the ridiculous too much, but in the past, we didn't address the nonsense that they said. But I assure you, this time, we will deal with all the lies, the propaganda, and the bluffs. Because let me say something to you. He said thirteen people were involved, but the only name he was mentioning was Spider Montut, Spider Montut. I want to let you know, and he called a number 4853760. That is the number Richard Frederick has for me on his phone. Because more than five years I have nothing to do with Richard. But let me just say to you, my number is 7161000. Okay? And Richard will not see that number on his phone. Because I have nothing to do with Richard. Okay? The things that I have heard about Richard from his colleagues, the things that I have seen Richard do in public, and the things that I know about Richard, I want nothing with Richard. So Richard, do not flatter yourself to think that I will call your program to interrupt your program. I have better things to do. What I want you to deal with, Richard, is the allegation that you are involved in blackmail. You are co-conspirator in blackmail. Deal with that. And while we at it, I want the prime minister to make a statement on this issue. Because quite apart from what I heard on the documentary, there are social media, media clips going around that indicates that the prime minister actually knows about this. More than that, more than that, it is said, that the prime minister said, in fact, the prime minister is not doing the dirty work himself, he is saying Joakim Henry to do the dirty work for him. So I want Joakim Henry, Richard Frederick, and Philippe Pierre to come out and tell us what is their role in the alleged blackmail that is taking place, that is happening. And Philippe Pierre, you, I want to remind you that you said, if you will not tolerate corruption in your government, and if anybody can finger any of your ministers for corruption, you will deal with them. Well, I see fingers up, Richard. Okay? We are seeing fingers for Joakim, and even you are being fingered, so let's not talk about Unaisile. I want you to deal with that, be true to your word. Now, forgive me, forgive me, I have to compare. Because fortunately for us, fortunately for us, we don't have two unknowns. We have two gentlemen that are well-known. Alan Michael Schasney and Philippe J. Pierre. Alan had a remarkable three years before COVID. He had an exceptional year during COVID and a glorious five years as prime minister of this country. I don't want the Honorable Alan Schasney to feel insulted, but we have to do it. Compare Philippe J. Pierre's three years with that of Alan Michael Schasney. Right now, yes, I'm interested in the plans of the UWP and their policies. Yes, I'm interested in what the SLP is advancing, but I'm not so interested in the talk that they're going to bring to me. The proof is in the pudding. The best indicator of a man's future performance is his past performance. And so, ladies and gentlemen, I want you to compare. I want you to contrast, and I want you to make a choice, as if there's a choice to make. There's one decision that we can all make, and that is Alan Schasney and the United Workers' Party. And I look forward, and I ask you to just hold on a bit in anticipation as the team will begin to unfold and the names will be delivered to you. I don't want to be indiscreet and speak for any other constituency, but I'm from Grozila, I can speak about Grozila. If I can say so myself, I was a damn good representative. But I want to announce today that the United Workers' Party is giving you an even better representative than the one of Spider Montut. So, we have a lot to hope for, we have a lot to look forward to. Ladies and gentlemen, I feel, although sometimes I feel like Dominic, because I'm rubbing shoulders with them, they're thinking, well, you know, I am a senior in this party. But rubbing shoulders with some of the members of the party makes me feel young. And it is a glorious thing when the youth, who are the future of this country, can see the light where it is unaligned with the party that is the future of this country. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to bring you one such young person who has aligned himself with the United Workers' Party. There are many more, but I want to keep the suspense going. In, in the near future, stay tuned. You will hear and see many more new young faces coming out of this United Workers' Party. And so, ladies and gentlemen, it is indeed my pleasure to invite to the podium to address you the President of the Babonu Youth Arm.
If you're going to grow your country, you have to grow the capacity. You have to make sure they're healthy, you also have to make sure they're well-educated. But that takes a plan. It takes a commitment. And it's not about just words. It has to be much more significant. And I have not heard anything here today, Mr. Speaker, that would give me any comfort, nor should it give any other Saint Lucian comfort, that they're going to use this opportunity that they found on their lap appropriately and to make sure that the young people of this country and the workforce of this country are going to get jobs that they can make careers of, jobs they can raise their families on, jobs in which, yes, they can become international and raise their own standard of living. That should be the aspiration. And I did not hear any of that today, Mr. Speaker. I thank you.
Mamai Flabot. Good afternoon. Say Janesla ka soufeh. Three years ago, our country elected the Saint Lucia Labour Party in hopes that they will put the citizens first. Thousands of young people were fooled and gave the Labour Party a chance to put us first as a campaign promised. What we have seen so far, however, are broken promises, secret deals, lies and propaganda. My people of Saint Lucia, the youth are suffering. Instead of putting young people first, we see the Labour Party continue to put its ministers and close friends first. No wonder, as we look islandwide, not even Labour Party supporters are enthusiastic about their performance over the last three years. Instead of celebrating, the country cries over increased hardship and suffering in most areas of national development. The Labour Party government has simply failed us all. They have failed the youth in particular. As we speak today, the National Youth Council continues to be the main youth organization on island and is responsible for twenty-eight district youth and sports councils. But would you imagine that the SLP has only provided forty-two thousand dollars for the year or less than four thousand dollars a month to run youth initiatives islandwide? Out of this small amount, NYC is expected to pay rent, hire staff and pay utilities. After doing all this, I am sure that there is nothing less to invest in the young people of Saint Lucia. Over the last three years, the Labour Party has failed the young people in crime specifically. Just a few days ago, two young men in my community of Babonu perished to gun violence, bringing the number of homicides to well over forty. If we continue at this rate, we are on trend to surpass the number of homicides for the last two years, both in proximity of seventy-five homicides. Most of these young victims in gun violence are young males like myself, around my age and not to mention, most inmates are also young males. Like me, they had bigger dreams than an untimely death. Like me, they are someone's brother or someone's son. Many of these families will wait in vain for justice and for closure for many years to come. Instead of fixing a broken justice system, the SLP facilitates laws where perpetrators of gun offenses can receive bail to come back to our streets and commit under current offenses. We therefore confront a national crisis by losing a large section of our young people to bloodshed. Young people have also been failed by this government in the area of employment. The Economic and Social Review for twenty-twenty-three says that the last three years unemployment among young people stood higher than the national unemployment rate. My people, this is bad. In two thousand twenty-three, one in every four young persons were employed with youth unemployment at twenty-five percent. This is largely attributed to a mismatch between skills and available jobs. Now, one thing I could tell you about the Labour Party young people. They will give you fish, but they will not teach you how to fish. Instead of a radical and transformative training policy, the government established a youth economy program where most of the money go to paying salaries and other administration costs. Please do not get me wrong. I am, I am in great support of any activity that will make our young people stronger. However, I cannot support a scheme where government gives salaries to its friends rather than young people. So, these are just a few of the many failures of the Labour Party over the last three years. If we continue to keep them in office, we will lose our country. We will endanger our youth. This is why I am here to tell my fellow youth that it is time to start a national movement to get rid of this insensitive Saint Lucia Labour Party government. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Cliterson. You heard it from a young man who knows what obtains and who is seeing for himself. You know, youth, if you really want your future to be bright, bring back the torch. And so, moving right along, ladies and gentlemen, I want to introduce the next speaker. And I like to tease him sometimes, you know, to say to him that I suspect on July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one, he did not hear the results. So, when the result was announced, a sweeping victory for the Saint Lucia Labour Party, all flabos accepted the defeat, went in their holes to, you know, to pick their scabs and, you know, to regroup and so on. There were a few on a medium called Sky FM who apparently did not hear the news. They were hitting, they were hitting as usual. And I must say, they never gave up the fight. They recognized the blunder from day one and they picked up the mantle and began the fight for rebuilding and saving Saint Lucia. One such gentleman who was in the heart of that movement was a gentleman.
There is indeed absolutely nothing for these guys to be celebrated. Absolutely nothing. This country has gone into a place that we have never seen before. But they will tell you otherwise. They will come out there and talk all kinds of nonsense to fool the people again. Three-quarters or almost ninety percent of what they will be saying to the people on whenever, tomorrow, I think, or Sunday, allies, ninety percent of it.
Mr. Felix Deterville, Champagne.
Thank you, my brother Spider, and good afternoon, everyone. And the protocol already adopt. Ladies and gentlemen, and don't forget all of our live streamers around the world and on UV TV. Good afternoon. Mamai Flabot. Mamai Flabot akor. Amen. Today, my speech will be something different from the radio and from normal speech where I go about every day. There's a writing behind me, right here. It says, "Your country needs you. Your country needs you." This is not just a writing, this is a message. This is a message, not just for me, not just for the gathering here. This is a message for every single Saint Lucian that is concerned about the state of affairs of the country. This is not just for us here today. I, I just want to speak about some of the things that the Labour Party has done in that, in that three years. One of it is, is really close to my heart because if you grew up in the Kastusnov area, those of us who grew up in the Kastusnov area, before Point Seraphin, we would go there, before Lucilek was built, we would go there, hunt birds on way of going to the VG beach. And there was a place also called Flying Angels, we would dive there. About nineteen eighty-one, not nineteen eighty-two, eighty-three, thereabouts, Sir John Compton built something there, just to fast track. Brought about Point Seraphin. I worked at the airport at the time, VG Airport. So, I saw all of this development happening right before my very eyes. Sir John Compton sweat, he borrowed money, he did everything possible because he realized that the cruise ship industry was taking shape in Saint Lucia and he was making sure that our people of Saint Lucia have a great industry that they could rely on. This happened, it became profitable, it became lucrative and the taxi drivers, the, the shop owners and everybody else that depended on that Point Seraphin enjoyed their profits there. We are hearing today that all of that hard work has gone to nothing. Now, I need a mathematician to do some math with me because I've, I've tried to understand that math and I'm still not able to get it. A government is benefiting of making six dollars and fifty cents of every cruise ship passenger. This is their money, it's in their pocket, six fifty. A new government is coming in, sells this cruise ship port, taking away the six fifty that they were earning, six fifty. And today, they are getting one dollar. Can anyone explain to me how is that math making sense? I cannot calculate it. How do you have something that belongs to you, it is yours? You are making money, it is in your pocket, but you're going to take it and give it to a private entity, a private company and that private company will take five fifty and you have a dollar. I don't understand the math. It cannot be beneficial to a people, our people. This is, this loan and our Prime Minister and political leader would, would tell us whether or not this loan has been paid off from way back then in the, in the mid-eighties. I'm assuming it's paid off. A brilliant man, our political leader, in twenty-eighteen, saw the need to have mega ships on this island. He realized that the ports, the docks we had, they were too small. What did he do? He brought about a dock that could have accommodated huge mega ships, six thousand passengers. Six thousand passengers, that is what you call vision. So, he didn't sell Point Seraphin, he didn't sell it off. He didn't get involved with a GPH deal to sell off something that we already had. He expanded on it, bring about a huge dock that could have accommodated mega ships. What did this government do? What did this government do? No regards for the, the industry, sell it off to a company. Like, they gave it away. You cannot say sell forty-seven million dollars amongst what, a hundred and twenty million ECs? I'm understanding that Slasper annually is raking in about forty million, if, if my math right. Now, if you do the math on that for thirty years plus another ten, come on, you're talking a billion plus. Who's thinking in that manner to do this kind, make, bring about this kind of deal while the people of Saint... Somebody said the Jays, but I, I, it's really ridiculous. I want to continue. I pulled up in a gas station, I drove into a gas station in VfO in twenty-nineteen. I must say this, I've said it on my show. And the gas attendant, the young lady, very beautiful young lady, she must have been nothing more than nineteen, twenty. And she said, I said hello and I get some fuel. She said, "How much fuel?" I said, "Twenty dollars." She's, I said, "How you doing? How you like the job?" I'm seeing this young, young, beautiful young... See, I'm just holding on her for now because I will be working at the cruise ship port. She didn't say I want to work. She said, "I will be working at the cruise ship port." This kid had hope that she would be working at the cruise ship port. What did the Labour Party do? Snatched that away from the young people, took it right up their hearts. And not just her, I know there were thousands, maybe hundreds of other young people that had their eyes focused on working at that cruise ship port. What did the Labour Party do? Sell off GPH, gave it, gave it away and discontinued that, that cruise ship port down in VfO. You know, our people, I'm speaking to you today. I've been given a little few, about ten minutes. We must rescue this country. Not just me, not just brother Alan Chastney, not... All of us must rescue this country collectively. If not, if not, we will not have a country tomorrow to do anything about. We have to rescue this country. And, and, and when you look at like the likes of the people that deceived us three years ago, waving documents, saying to our people that this one is corrupt, that one is corrupt, money is going there, money is going there. Look at what has happened today. Look at what has happened today. A guy took government's property, national asset, sold it, devalued it and sold it to a best friend for seven million, two point, what is it, two point nine million? Two point seven million dollars. A property, bit waterfront property that is worth thirty million. The gentleman that it was sold to, he was on an interview, he said, they asked him, "How much are you going to sell if I get twenty-five million, I'll sell it today." But he bought it for two point five. We have to call these people out. This man damaged us. And I'm not ashamed to say his name, Richard Frederick, damaged our party and the prosperity of Saint Lucia in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one. So, we must return the favor. And I'm not calling on just me and flambos. Saint Lucia must return the favor on what Richard Frederick did to the prosperity of our country. Our country was on a path. Our country was on a path to prosperity. Our country was in a good place, our young people were happy. And this man waved documents, deceived, deceived the people, propagandas, all kinds of nonsense on everybody. And what did our people do? They stayed home and here they are in office today. I want to continue with one thing about this man. And for those of you that don't think this man is all about himself and his monies, you don't know the man. This guy built the Plywood Plaza there on Penier Street. And I got word that the construction, the contractors, they were paid ninety-five thousand dollars. So, if you include the other amenities, the wiring, plumbing and everything else, let's put another hundred and five thousand dollars on that, you're talking two hundred thousand. They, from their own lips, said it costs five hundred thousand. Where's the other three hundred thousand? Where is the other three hundred thousand? Where is the other three hundred thousand? Today, I met a young man at the airport, I just came from work. I have to give those stories, they're true. And I saw this young man staring at me. So, then he approached me. He said, "I listen to your show, Mr. Champagne." I said, "Yeah, thank you very much, I get it all the time." He said, "I heard you when you said that we were lost at sea and only Alan Chastney, the United Workers' Party, brought us to safety when we were out there, not even knowing if we would live or die." This young man said that to me today, isn't that coincidence that I had to come here today and speak? He said Champagne, Mr. Champagne, that's how he addressed me. Had it not been for the United Workers' Party, I probably might not have been speaking to you today. This is a party that is concerned about the people of this country. This is a man here that is concerned about the people of Saint Lucia. And I'm asking for all of the people, not just the flambos. Because you have realized, all Saint Lucia have realized that the SLP has destroyed this country. They have destroyed this country, they have ripped it apart. They have ripped it apart. And we have to do something to rescue our country. You see this here? Saint Lucia needs you, your country. All of us must work together to get rid of this SLP once and for all. And for those of you, those of you that are afraid to call a studio, a radio station, be it mine, be it Timothy, that fear must stop today. You must defeat these guys by any means necessary. We must get rid, not just because we want to rule, not just because we want to be in power, because we want to rescue this country. There's nothing that's going to be left for our children. Those of you in the diaspora, I saw you when you traveled. You came down in the hundreds, from New York, from England. And when you were leaving after the elections, I saw you, you were making fun of me at the airport. There's nothing wrong in that way in politics. But I'm addressing you today. Three years later, I'm certainly sure you will not come back to Saint Lucia and making fun of Champagne. Three years later, I'm certainly sure, all those persons, we have no issues with our people. Our people make mistakes. So, I am asking you, our people in the diaspora, in Martinique, all around the world, when you come back this time, when that bell is called, you will come into Saint Lucia this next time to vote for the United Workers' Party. Because we are indeed the better party. I love you, Saint Lucia, I thank you. God bless you, God bless Saint Lucia.
Always bubbly, Champagne. Ladies and gentlemen, you heard for yourself, the litany goes on. The things that your government has done to you. At the end of the day, we have uncovered all the lies, all the bluffs. We do not know all the secrets yet, but some of them are being... all the secrets yet, but some of them are being exposed. And thanks to the United Workers' Party and its vigilance, we are seeing those secrets being exposed. With the last secret that was exposed is while we were jumping up, having our bacchanal and drinking our rum, they pushed through in the Gazette a two-point-five waiver for a foreign company, while you Saint Lucians have to pay two-point-five percent on goods and services. The opposition, business people, people cried out about it, the government that puts you first ignored your crying and went ahead with it. They said you have to make a sacrifice because it was important for them to get that money to use for security and health. Today, you are no more secure than you were yesterday. And by the way, you know what I find strange? I remember the days, if I'd come here to a gathering like this, first thing, everybody, you heard somebody died in Babonay yesterday? Not one person talks about that now. Killings, murders have become so commonplace in this country that it's not even news anymore. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a government that places no value on your life. They do, you have several killings, some weekends, and not a word from your government despite how many ministers you have dealing with crime. That is because you don't mean a thing to them. During Covid, I told you, over four hundred Saint Lucians lost their lives immediately upon assumption of office of the Saint Lucia Labour Party. In less than three years, more than two hundred Saint Lucians have lost their lives through violent crime and they do not give a damn about that. You are not their priority. So Saint Lucians, see about your well-being, see about your welfare, take your future into your own hands and put an end to that downward slide that the Saint Lucia Labour Party is taking us on. And ladies and gentlemen, you heard, you just heard Champagne, you heard Brenda from a stall what, you heard a young man, Cliterson. I want to bring another woman to the podium who did battle for us in the last election, who is currently one of our parliamentarians, she represents us in the Senate. I want to call on Senator Farah Polius to address us.
So I want to say to the district rep, the prime minister and the minister responsible for agriculture, where is the transparency and the equity in the distribution of these bags of fertilizer? Where is it? Why politicize a sector that is so critical to the survival of the people of this country?
That's right, that's right.
We have questions, we need answers.
That's right.
And as Saint Lucians, we need to stand up for what is right in this country. We need to stand up for what is right in this country. Mama Iflavou? We are in the midst, and listen carefully, we are in the midst of a massive political quake. Ex sou popo, kassanti, kassukwe. Put your ears to the ground. Put your ears to the ground. Not just now, but put your ears to the ground because there is a major shift happening in this country. Fellow Saint Lucians, I have conducted a thorough evaluation of the Saint Lucia Labour Party for the past three years. That period, July twenty-six, twenty twenty-one to July twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. And according to Morgie, you know Morgie, the Calypsonian, today the results I bring and I want you to bear with me. Bear with me because I want to bring you the results. My evaluation focuses on just two of the main pillars that constitute the political economy and namely, education and agriculture. Yes, I come from a farming community. Agriculture. We all know, we all know that the Labour Party is all about smoke screens, making you believe that something is happening when nothing is happening. And you know, while they celebrate, they claim that their government has governed with compassion and a desire to unite the country. Shameless! A desire to unite the country? The prime minister and his cabinet have done nothing but to create division and business in this country. You know this us and them ideology, this is what they constantly perpetuate? Ekisao de de lo juwa, you're a product of Canada? Shameless! And they want to give Saint Lucians the impression that they are for everyone by sprinkling a few, one or two UWP supporters in the mix. Giving you the impression that they are concerned, they care for the people of this country. They are fooling themselves. Saint Lucians, it's a critical thing for us to do, you know, and we are at a very important juncture. And I want you to do some reflection because I want you to do it for yourself, don't let anyone do it for you. Look at our hospitals, saoue. Look at the conditions of our roads, what do you see? The same people who claimed that people did not eat roads, now they are so busy. Mwen de oka manhe nou, yopaga jas manje nou. But these are the same people who are giving jobs to selected members, fati dren palaa, fati foot pa fala. Kisa? Yopaga, a chime pa kama je mouna kwa? Eh? Chime pa kama je mouna kwa? Moun ba kama je chime akwa? Mwen de bude yo haple? They are the same ones who made you believe, Saint Lucians believe, that people don't eat roads. But as I said the last time, as I said, samate kieng, a national freeness, it's a national freeness that is going on, a national freeness. Ask yourself this question, as you look around, are you, and Spider asked, I'm said it at the beginning, are you in a better situation than you were three or four years ago? Or is your situation worse off? Are you getting more value for your money under a Labour Party administration? Do you have more money in your pocket? And is the cost of living in this country lower or higher? Let me tell you, I am sure that all Saint Lucians have the answer to these questions and I'm certain we are all on the same page, we would agree. So this Labour Party, when they claim that they care for the people of this country and that they are governing with a desire to unite, you know what grade they deserve? Tell me what grade they deserve? Who did zero? No grade. They deserve a failing grade. They deserve a failing grade. And I want to talk about education. I'm an educator. Let's talk about education. The past three years, what have we seen? Have we seen anything new at the Ministry of Education? Nothing new has been happening. They only talk about and boast about paying fees. But what new initiative, new interventions have been implemented at the Ministry of Education? The Ministry of Education, fellow Saint Lucians, is at a standstill and you know why? Because the Minister of Education, Sean Edwards, wants to introduce a manifesto dream of converting four schools into a TIVET schools. And you know, the ministry is really cautious about that and you know why? There is so much uncertainty at the ministry and you want to know why? Because no one seems to know exactly what a TIVET school is and what the curriculum for the nation's children is expected to be. And you want to talk about establishing four TIVET schools, that is what you are going to celebrate, where is the curriculum? Meanwhile, fellow Saint Lucians, political interference and involvement has really hampered the advancement and development of TIVET in Saint Lucia. To a politics, to a politics. And you're going to celebrate this? Is this about you or is it about the people of this country? The quality of education that we offer to our students? For the first time in two decades, fellow Saint Lucians, bear with me, because as I said, we are in the midst of a massive political quake. For the first time in two decades, the TIVET landscape in Saint Lucia has witnessed political interference in its operations and under a UWP administration, no minister of education ever interfered with the operations of TIVET, none. The UWP administration recognized that TIVET was a specialty education area that was not easily available in Saint Lucia and consequently allowed the office to operate independently of government. And this is what we want, the transparency in this country. Today, who do we see at the head? A political operative? The head of TIVET? Job for the boys? Job for the boys? The head of TIVET and the specialty TIVET expertise and education required, the specialty and expertise TIVET requires to advance in Saint Lucia that does not even reside, it does not even reside with this political appointment. Tapi, tapi, tapi. For this reason, the four TIVET schools have been choked in the pipeline. They've been choked in the pipeline and the education development in Saint Lucia has gone nowhere under a Labour Party administration. So move le dimissiè, Sean Edward, your grade is an F. Nukala asu agriculture. You know the way in which the Labour Party has handled the agricultural sector, particularly the banana industry? I feel it, you know? I feel it and I see it. I should have really brought the clips to show you. How? The very same bananas, bananas being bought by NFTU. Farmers come, they sell their bananas and later on, you see some of the very same farmers coming with their vans. The same bananas are being disposed of. The pigs and the cows are getting fat, they are smiling and farmers are catching their tail. This is what's happening in this country and we have to ask ourselves whether we are going to allow the Saint Lucia Labour Party, allow the Saint Lucia Labour Party to destroy whatever that is left of Saint Lucia. We cannot allow that, we shouldn't, we shouldn't. Our country needs us. Our country needs us, every single one of us. They fooled the farmers, they promised them better days and a better market. The farmers were misled into believing that market access, particularly the one in the UK, would improve. But you know what the reality is? It is so different. A task force, c'est ça? Philippe Pire, Pommet. A task force was established. They set up a task force filled with whom? Individuals driven by self-interest. Where is the task force today? Where is the task force? You promised the farmers that you were going to get them a better and more viable market for their fruits. Now we don't hear anything about the task force. Where are the people on the task force? What exactly are they doing for the farmers? This government initially announced a relief package of five hundred thousand dollars for farmers who had suffered the loss of, when they say packaging materials. And just days later on, you know, they doubled the figure, they double it, but you know what continues to remain a mystery? The criteria that they used for distributing those funds. That remains a mystery. That remains a mystery. What criteria did they use? You know what? This was so fair and that was such an insult to some of the farmers. Some farmers who consistently sold more fruits receive less than two hundred dollars, mama. Less than two hundred dollars. While others with far less output received four, five or even six times more. Kimony esasafet? Kimony esasafet? What did you do with the figures? Ou an gyo, pou eki, c'est moun ou an jouen pli laja? Es c'est sakifet? Less than two hundred dollars, not even enough money to buy two bags of fertilizer. While I am on fertilizer, let me tell you. While I am on fertilizer, let me tell you. You see, one of the things that they say that they are celebrating? The bags of fertilizer from Morocco and some other fertilizer, I think 9,000 bags of fertilizer that they distributed to the farmers. Saint Lucians, don't be fooled. Pour miè fois, pour miè fois, moi j'ai mis ouais constituency office tunay à côté mon car vini pour guano. In Dernuina, for example, and I'm not ashamed to say it, I'm not afraid, in Dernuina, Shaun's office became the distribution center. Et glè la paten ya scèle pour quoi? C'est sac fertilizer. Machine vignyek point mene yo gardette. La caillonne a ses strong supporters là. Who would then distribute the bags of fertilizer to their supporters? And you want to come and talk about celebrating victory? Celebrating achievement? This is a shame, a crying shame. Crying shame. You need to understand what's happening. You need to understand what is happening in this country. Because I know, and if you put your ears to the ground, you will hear it too. The majority of the farmers are disheartened. They feel abandoned. They are confused. Openly, they tell you. Openly, they tell you under the previous UWP government, they were much better. They were in a better place. But you know what? This Labour Party administration chooses to ignore the sentiments expressed by the farmers. They just want to fool them. They have managed the banana industry miserably. And we need the farmers. That's why I tell you, the sheik starts with them too, you know? The sheik starts with them too. They have blatantly disregarded the farmers. The farmers were supposed to be the backbone of this country's agricultural sector. You know, they feel so comfortable sitting. It's the seat of power. They feel comfortable. Comfortable while the farmers are there struggling to make ends meet. They are struggling to make ends meet. You know Shaun Edwards, for five years, il y a cap play way by se farmer. Il y a mini HTS. Il y a mini HTS à Di Navalia. Pour point adoff farmer, point Vfig Allier, Bochimir, and to bring in the media. You were crying for the farmers? Your government is in office today, where are you? And what are you doing for the people? What are you doing for the farmers? Ou pas cap play way by you encore? Now you know what is even more embarrassing? Some of the very same farmers, he used to orchestrate, to orchestrate these things on the side of the road with all bananas. Adam, when he has a clip, même se farmer cap point c'est gladis sans vendu, mene by koshon. Where are you now? So instead of celebrating your victory, focus on doing more to address the poor healthcare services in this country. Focus on doing more to address the pressing issues related to crime in this country. Focus on doing more to reduce the high prices of goods at our supermarkets and to better the quality of fruits that the farmers, that the farmers offer. Focus on doing this. As a United Workers' Party, the party of progress, the party with one accord, your preferred political party, we will rise. And when we rise, we will rise. And when we do, we are going to fix it for you. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you very much. Some of the therapy that we need in Dernuina. Now, now, bon, tu blague, enfin, bah moi, farmer a dit moi, elle picka par la boite, you buy moon fertilizer, you buy you ti sac fertilizer. Mais les flabots là, nous gagnent comme un sac fertilizer. So, di, di, SLP, chébé, fertilizer, you. Nous espérons, les flabots vini boba nous, fertilizer. Ladies and gentlemen, we are moving right along. Moving right along. I will bring you a gentleman who was a part of the last cabinet of the United Workers' Party. And he is a beacon of what representation is all about. I know, I know. With the lackluster performance of Granny Ee and all her secret dits that she is having right now, the time will come when Soufre will return to proper representation, progress and development. And this is a young man who exemplifies what it means to develop a constituency. I am pleased, I am proud to present to you another soldier in the fight. Last year, Mr. Vice President, Saint Lucia's debt repayment increased by a whopping 17.2%. 17.2% to a gigantic $341.3 million. 341.3 million. It's in the Economic and Social Review, not me, not my figures, not my words. This means that the taxpayers of this country, Mr. Vice President, are obligated to repay 27,608,333.3 cents per month or almost $1 million a day in debt repayment. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I wouldn't go for that. Let me say a pleasant good evening to you, Flabo supporters in the house this evening, our Flabo supporters in the diaspora, at the living rooms in Saint Lucia, and of course, our political leader and other members of parliament. It is really an honor and a privilege to be here tonight. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we are here to critique the performance of the secrets, lies and propaganda administration for the past three years. So tonight, we are going to give Philippe J. Pierre a grade. And it is my honor to look at an issue which is creating havoc across the length and breadth of Saint Lucia, where every single one of us in this room, every single Saint Lucian is a victim of it. And that is cost of living. No one has been spared the wrath of the bad economic and social policies of this Prime Minister and this government. Policies I term philiponomics. And in philiponomics, after three years, ladies and gentlemen, Saint Lucia now has the worst economic manager in the eastern Caribbean. We have performed the worst. Despite, in 2021, Philippe J. Pierre been given a solid foundation to continue the works of the government and people of Saint Lucia. They squandered it all. Why? Simply because of politics. It's not about the country. It's never about the people. With the secrets, lies and propaganda party, it is all about politics. So do not be fooled, brothers and sisters, when they tell you putting people first. It is always putting the secrets, the lies and the propaganda first. And as a result, brothers and sisters, as a result, we are all suffering. We are all going through the toughest of times in this country. Many people throughout Saint Lucia will tell you, during Covid, life was better. Things was better. Money was, we had money in our pockets. Business was moving. Not today, ladies and gentlemen. And today, we have a Prime Minister and a government. All they make are excuses. It's either they blame Alan Chastney, they blame UWP, they make excuses, they'll tell you kill it, or it is not your business. They never take responsibility for the governance of this country. They have never taken responsibility, brothers and sisters. And if you go to cost of living and if you speak to anybody who has done economics or business management at school, they will tell you that one of the main causes of inflation that is causing the cost of living to rise is the price of fuel. Price of fuel. And today, brothers and sisters, we have a Prime Minister who refuse to bring down the price of fuel at the pumps so that you, the people of Saint Lucia, could save more. During the hardest of economic times, United Workers' Party under the leadership of Alan Chastney capped the price of fuel at $13.95 a gallon. The hardest of economic times. Fuel was almost $100 a barrel, US. Today, it's about $82. And we are still paying $16.50 a gallon. Is that a Prime Minister? Is that a government that cares about you, the people? No. You have a government but has collected the most revenue from petroleum products in the history of this country. Last year alone, brothers and sisters, the government collected $34 million extra in the receipts on fuel products to a massive $68 million. And not a penny of that was passed on to you, the people of Saint Lucia. So he's extorting your pockets every single day. Every single day, you have been extorted by this Prime Minister and this government with his philiponomics policies. And those monies are there for the cronies, the hacks, the families, and the same foreigners they demonize in opposition. They are the beneficiaries of these monies that they are extorting from your pockets today. Despite making so much revenue from fuel products, they decreased the subsidy which was placed on cooking gas. They decreased it by over $3, making it more expensive for you, the people of Saint Lucia, to purchase a tank of cooking gas. Is that a Prime Minister with a conscience? Is that a Prime Minister who understands the plight, the suffering, the pain of the people? Despite all the revenue, all the taxes they are collecting, record taxes, brothers and sisters, he did not have the conscience, the social conscience. He went and increased the price of bread. And Spider said it earlier, $1 now cannot buy you two bread, two loaves at the bakery. It cannot buy you two loaves. They still did not have a conscience, brothers and sisters. He raised the price of bus fares. He raised the price of bus fares. And your wages are at the same level. The tuna fish you used to buy for $1.45 is $2.65 right now. The corned beef, the rice, everything has gone up by over 50, 60%, brothers and sisters. And you know what the Prime Minister, the excuse is giving? It is imported inflation. Nonsense, brothers and sisters. Do not be deceived by Philippe J. Pierre and his cabals of visionless ministers. The inflation that we have in Saint Lucia causing the cost of living to spiral out of control is as a result of the bad economic policies of this Prime Minister and this government. It's nothing about imported inflation. And I'm telling you that because their report card and the budget gave us the answer. And if any one of you went through the Economic and Social Review, it shows you that the other OECD countries' inflation rate was much lower than Saint Lucia's. Much lower. So, Saint Vincent, Grenada, Saint Kitts, Dominica, they didn't go through Covid? They all went through all the crises which we were faced with. The Ukraine war impacted them the same way. The cost of shipping the same way. You know? So these are petty excuses from the Prime Minister and the government about imported inflation. Mr. Prime Minister, if you want to control inflation, if you want more money to stay in the pockets of the people of Saint Lucia, you have to bring down the price of gas at the pumps. Bring it back to 1495. You have to increase the subsidy on cooking gas if you want to bring down the inflation. And to make it worse, brothers and sisters, no conscience. They went further and cut the subsidy on school transportation. Instead of increasing the school bus transportation subsidy, you decrease it. That, brothers and sisters, is wickedness. That is a Prime Minister government who does not care, who does not love, who is heartless to you, the young people of this country. And for that, we need to hold him accountable. We have to hold him accountable, brothers and sisters. Again, as if all those maladies was not enough. Philiponomics went and added 2.5% tax on the backs of the people, a compound tax again, on the backs of the people. And he lied about it. A bogus tax told us that it is for health and security, only to find out weeks later, it was for two policy-based loans. Two policy-based loans. And brothers and sisters, look at the state of healthcare today. Look at the state of crime in this country. And he has no respect for you, the people of Saint Lucia. No regard for you, the people of Saint Lucia. He has gone ahead and waived that 2.5% tax for foreign company. The same foreigners, the same foreigners they demonize. They had all what to say, FFF. He waived 2.5% tax for that foreign company. So you, the people of Saint Lucia, do not deserve a waiver. You have to stay in misery. You have to be... You have to be suffering every single day as a result of this compounded tax by Philippe J Pierre and the Secrets, Lies, Propaganda Party. Brothers and sisters, we cannot accept it. We have to say no to those policies. Because we know that under Alan Chastney and the United Workers' Party, you, the people, were progressing. There was development. There was growth. There was regard for you, the people of Saint Lucia. It is sad today, brothers and sisters. When school is closed, teachers are on vacation. And I meet a particular teacher in my constituency. And I ask her, "How you doing, my dear? I thought you on vacation out of Ireland." She said, "Mr. H? Vacation? I can afford no vacation." And that's a graduate teacher, you know. A graduate teacher making almost four thousand dollars a month. She cannot afford to leave Saint Lucia for two weeks to go on vacation because the economic policies of the Secrets, Lies, Propaganda Administration have wiped out her savings and everything that she is earning on a monthly basis. That is what we are faced with in this country, brothers and sisters. That is what we are faced with. This government, the philiponomics of Philippe J Pierre, have decimated the middle class in Saint Lucia. There's no more middle class in Saint Lucia. There might just be very little in the upper class. Or the little that is in the upper class are the cronies and the hacks of the Labour Party, who are the comrades, who are enjoying everything, the cabal. The cabal who controls everything in construction, in entertainment, in everything. They are the ones who are in the upper class today. And everybody is now at the bottom of the pit. Brothers and sisters, the day is coming when we, when we are going to make the right decision. We are going to put an end to the victimization, to the nepotism, to the lies, the propaganda. And when we get into office, we are going to reveal all the secrets which we are keeping away from you, the people of Saint Lucia. We will reveal the secrets. All the secrets at GPH, we will tell you all what it is. All the secrets of the halls of justice, we will let you all know what it is. All the secrets, all the secrets of CIP, we are going to come and tell you all what it is. That day is coming, brothers and sisters. It is coming. And I know we have a leader, a leader who is going to be there and guide us and ensure that it is done. No, brothers and sisters, what they do these days, I was told is that in Mekut South, in the leader opposition's constituency, they keep on sending everybody to his office to try and get as much as they can, to say that he cannot do this, he cannot deliver. But this is a man I know, brothers and sisters. In between 2006, 2011, when he vied for the Soufrah constituency at elections, he proved to the people of Soufrah, he's worth. This is a man, if had it not been for his work, his determination, we would not have that main bridge by the fire station in Soufrah. Had it not been for this man, the people of Diamond would not have pipe-boned water into their homes today. Had it not been for him, we would not have started the initial foundation of the Hammond Beach Park, which I completed when I came into office. Had it not been for him, Soufrah would not have been able to recover so fast after the devastation of Hurricane Thomas in 2011. So I know, I know the strength, the character of this man. And what it tells you about United Workers' Party? When we are in government, whether we are elected MPs, whether we are selected candidates, we show the people our performance, our work whilst our government is in power. So, so if Gibion's government is in power today and he is helpless, he cannot offer anything to the people of Mekut South, it tells you what kind of government, what kind of party the Secrets, Lies and Propaganda Party is all about. So brothers and sisters, we have less than two years. Friday was three years. We already Sunday. We have less than two years to go. There will be light at the end of the tunnel. There will be light at the end of the tunnel. And as Ferrer said earlier, Alan Chastney, United Workers' Party, is going to rise like a phoenix from the ashes. And we are going to stand strong. We are going to govern this country with respect and decency and integrity and make life better for each and every one of you. So brothers and sisters, I want you all to stay focused. Do not be deterred by the rumors, the lies, the propaganda, the intimidation. You have endured victimization and oppression and extortion for three years. And we are strong people, strong-willed United Workers' Party members, supporters. We are going to be able to endure it for another year and a few months. Because victory, brothers and sisters, is on our side. Make no mistake. When that bell rings and we go to the polls, United Workers' Party is going to be the next government of Saint Lucia and Alan Chastney, the next prime minister of this country. Thank you, brothers and sisters. And if I must say, Philippe J Pierre, you have received an F as a fail as, as prime minister and economic manager. And if I can go further, if there is any such thing, fail minus for you, Mister Pierre, with your philiponomics. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much, Herod. The energy is there. The fire is there. The vision is there. So the victory must come. I mean, there is hope for Saint Lucia. There is hope. All is not lost. You know, I listen to Herod talk about the economy and all of that. You know, it's amazing. History is on the side of the United Workers' Party. When you look at what we have done for Saint Lucia, I would like to quote an old gentleman that I knew as a kid, who always used to say to us, "What one has done, one can do." The United Workers' Party has done it. The United Workers' Party will do it again. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call on our next speaker, a gentleman who has been a longstanding member of the United Workers' Party. And today, he is at the helm in the leadership of the party. He is none other than Mister Thurl Prudential.
We are the party with vision. We are the party that develops. We are proud of our decades of success. We believe in ourselves. We are proud of ourselves. We are the fruitful party. We are the party of choice. Twenty twenty-four. Together, we celebrate our sixtieth birthday. We are one family. We are the United Workers. And this is our party, the United Workers' Party.
Are we ready? Are you ready? Yeah, bon matin. Moi assis bola, we gozile. Epi an bug, un hack, SLP, i passe, i di me prudente, zat fini. Moi gade, ek nagati lek, ki samu jadi? Pumisia kadi me sa. Kon sae passe, moi nagade, mo fly ka, ha ka twene. Mo di kwa e, katwa ba, men fini, mo flower, ha ka twene? Baisho. Bagasho, se uki fini? Pa prudent ki fini. Messieurs, I want to say to you all tonight that the United Workers' Party is treading the right course. The United Workers' Party under an Alan Chastney is going in the right direction. And the time has come when you must stand with your leader, stand with our political leader to take this party to victory. And let yourself not worry. Don't worry about tomorrow. Don't worry about the fears that Labour Party wants to instill inside of you. Don't worry about the victimization because we know better. United Workers' Party must endure and will win. Folks, Labour Party is celebrating three years of nothing, of corruption, shame and lies. And they think they've done something? You want to compare this with sixty years of UWP success? We build this country. This country was built on the backs of the United Workers' Party. And let no one tell you any differently. When it comes to the road and the infrastructure of this country, it was constructed by the United Workers' Party. When it comes to healthcare, it was constructed by the United Workers' Party. It was the UWP that took poor people out of poverty and made them middle class in this country. And we are going to do it again. Because that's what we do best as a party. Ladies and gentlemen, as your chairman, I didn't come in this to lose, you know. I'm warning you all. I didn't come in this to lose. We came in to make a difference and we came in to remove this government off the backs of the people of this country. That's what we came to do. That's what we came to do. And let no one, no one deceive you. Let no one make you lose your focus. We ain't going back. We not going back, but forward. That's where we are going. That's where we are going. Because at the end of the day, my friends, too many Saint Lucians have been victimized. Too many of our supporters have been victimized. So it's enough is enough. Labour must go. And anyone who feels that they can be distractors in our way, to distract us, I will tell you all, be gone Satan. We gone Satan. Clear the way. Clear the way because the anointed party of the Lord must move forward. And that is the United Workers' Party. You know, I'll tell you something. When we ended our term, three years ago, we left the United, we left the Labour Party an almost completed hospital. Three years after, Labour still ka struggle pu fini al opital. Messieurs, this is serious, you know. This is serious. It is a shame. And not only that, too. When we talk about healthcare in this country, who introduced healthcare to this country? The United Workers' Party. In every community, we provided and constructed a bunch of health centers throughout the country, length and breadth of Saint Lucia. We did that. And who closed them and who destroyed them? Labour. Because that's all the Labour Party does, is to come and destroy things. Folks, I'll tell you something. And I want you to listen to me carefully. When we were about to leave office, United Workers' Party was on the verge of completing a fallen highway from Grozyle Rodney Bay in that area. And what did, what did Labour do? They stopped it. Today, we have more chaos and more disruption of, of people's lives trying to travel from Grozyle to Rodney Bay. It takes you forty, forty minutes to an hour. Folks, shameless. And these are the people who want to come today to say to us that we should accept them as a government of this country? No way. No way. I ain't leaving no massive prime minister and putting, and putting him there or leaving him there and, and, and leaving a man with the vision of Alan Chastney who can lead this country to a better place. In the last elections, I want to remind you. I faithfully, and like a true soldier, went to the polls and voted for United Workers' Party and for Leonard Montut. That's where I cast my vote. And I had no shame in doing it. I had no reason not to do it. I understood very well that I had to do the right thing. I had to do the right thing. And today, those who are complaining and saying, "Bagai wed, well, me sabai wed, na soufa josko, me maka, maka retreat." "Maka retreat." I am not retreating from the path of taking UWP to victory. You know, let's talk about Labour. With Labour, when we left, we had a CIP that was functional. We had a CIP that was working efficiently. Our boys that tout mun vle, vle resign from CIP because you're ten ball, tout kalte bagai kali. Tout mun vle resign. Everybody wants to resign from CIP. Bagai show. Bagai show. But like I tell them, let us focus on the Labour Party. Focus on you all, don't focus on us. Alan name not before any court in America. Guy Joseph name not in front of any court in the US. Examine yourselves and realize that it's your ministers and your people you appointed. Their names are before court in the United States. And all of a sudden, they want to run for the hills. They want to run for the hills. You're just go shot kick where you need F life. So they have to save that little life, you understand? They have to save that little life. But I'm telling them, passi megwen ep flabou. No, don't do it. Because we are relentless. Yes, we are more disciplined than you all. That's why we doesn't misbehave. You understand? But we know how to vote, we know how to campaign and we've done it yesterday and we'll do it tomorrow again to be able to bring about that difference. I said to you also, we had a plan for healthcare. We offered you seventy-five thousand dollars, every citizen. You all accepted universal healthcare. You still have to pay for your healthcare although you eighty years old. And to be on a serious note, I have my mom. Everybody knows that she's bedridden for a number of years. And pumpers that can kill you. She's eighty-four years old. Eighty-four years old, pumpers expensive. Um, I have to pay a nurse's aid to take care of my mom. Twenty-four hours, she's there, thank God, she's doing a good job. When she is relieved on a Saturday, on a Friday, I have to pay somebody Saturday and Sunday to continue to hold for her and to take care of my mother. And you mean to tell me someone who gave her life for this country cannot get government to give her help? You understand? And she's eighty-four years old? We're not asking for things. We're not begging for things. All I'm, my point I'm bringing here is universal healthcare, bar labor, pa katwa vay. It doesn't work. It's rubbish. So they make you believe they're offering you universal healthcare. But they're rationing healthcare, that's what they're doing. But I can promise you, under a United Workers' Party, we will have affordable and efficient healthcare here in this country under an Alan Chastney-led administration. Folks, I'll say something to you. When you, when you really think of it, so Saint Lucia... so St Lucia, you had a guy who in the first three years worked like magic to move this country. Covid came, he still proved that he was a dumb star. He was a star, a star of politics, a star of government. You understand? And he knew how to move this country forward and save lives and livelihoods. That's what he did in the year when Covid came. And you all brought in minister or prime minister of Massav and four hundred St Lucians died. And let us never forget that. Let us never forget what happened. Four hundred citizens died under this Labour Party government. You understand? And out of negligence, out of disrespect for people here in this country and you continue to lie to them, tell them we were keeping them in prison because of the lockdown that was happening throughout the world. It wasn't about St Lucia. St Lucia, even the United States, the greatest country on the face of the earth, had lockdown. But we fooled and lied to the people of this country. And I want to say something to the Labour Party. Look at us. Look at us, Flabo. We can take licks, but we will give you licks in return. We will give you licks in return. And folks, I don't want to be too long, but I want to say to you one thing as your chairman. When I tell you let us go out, you better be ready to go out. Let us go out. When I tell you let hit the ground, the time has come to hit the ground. So no one is going to, no, no more talk. No more just talk and fancy talk. Now is action. We have to put boots on that ground. We have to put boots on that ground. And I'll say to you something. I will never ask you to do something that I am not willing to do. Alan Shastner will never ask you to do something that he's not willing to do. Guy Joseph will never ask you to do something that he's not willing to do. We are willing to go out and I'm telling you, put your boot because UWP needs you right now. And you cannot say you are UWP. You cannot say you are UWP but you want to stand in the way of progress. It is not. Not. You cannot stand in the way of progress. Because at the end of the day, God forbid that we should lose the next election because we are lazy. But I want to say to Labour, because no more sitting on the fence. No more sitting in your little ivory tower. No more sitting by the bay and drinking your beer. It's time to put your boot and let's take the fight to the St Lucia Labour Party. Folks, let me say something to you. This country didn't come by mistake. We are the party who took St Lucia from the jaws of colonialism in nineteen sixty-four and started to work in a way that could benefit the poor man here on the ground. We were the party in nineteen sixty-seven who took you to associated statehood. What I mean by that, and I'll give you a quick rundown, I won't be long. What it meant is that we for the first time in nineteen sixty-seven, we were in charge of our internal affairs while Britain controlled our external affairs. Are you with me? For the first time. Labour was there since nineteen fifty-four. Never took you. We are the real party of Malawi. The United Workers' Party is. And what we did in nineteen seventy-nine was they fought Sir John. George Oldham and everybody tried to prevent independence. Don't forget that. I was a child. I was part of it. I was part of those persons going around with my mother, Tagas in our bam bam. You understand? Everywhere, they prevented us from feeling that we needed to, as if, well, shut up. You cannot support the UWP. But we were resilient. Within two and a half years, United Workers' Party was back in office. I am saying those things to show you the resilience of a UWP. And if you truly understand the UWP experience, you will understand we are workers and we can make a big difference in this country. And I'll say one more thing before I leave. Let no one, no one that call themselves UWP equate us to the Labour Party. Flabo will never be Labour. 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 Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. What am, what am, they called the elections already? Well, boy, tell them, call it because we're ready. Ladies and gentlemen, I love the spirit. Despite the hardships that we are going through, the indomitable spirit of the United Workers' Party remains. And I want them to know that the darker it gets, the brighter the Flabo shines. And so, ladies and gentlemen, I want to introduce the next speaker. And among the things he will speak about is the CIP. I was struggling with my notes here. What is CIP? Somebody outside told me crooks in power these days. But but let me just say something to you. The chairman mentioned that under the United Workers' Party, we had a thriving CIP program that was above board and there was integrity. Today, when you say CIP in St Lucia, everybody thinking corruption. Everybody thinking ball ball. Everybody thinking about WTF. But you know something? When a man demonstrates what his character is to you, believe him. And accept that that is what he is. And any of you who tell me you are surprised by Ernest Hillel, I am not with you. I am not surprised. In West Indies cricket, the man was embroiling controversy. The man went to the High Commission. You all heard about Jufali? You all about the Ford Ranger? So what do you expect? What do you expect when you put cats to watch butter? So, St Lucians, St Lucians, we got what we asked for, but I will say still, we don't deserve it so bad. And so, we have a team of men and women ready and willing and able to rescue St Lucia. And I want to call on a member of that team now. Okay, again, this was a representative who transformed his constituency, who worked very hard, who did wonders for our main industry tourism. And while Philip J. Pierre and his government thought that tourism would never recover, they are riding on the performance and the work of this gentleman to build a platform for the main industry in St Lucia. And so, I would like to introduce to you, I would like to introduce to you the the returning member.
It was presented on the website of the CIP that you could look at. Would be from the financial year April 1st, twenty twenty-one to March 31st, twenty twenty-two. So it means therefore that reports from April 1, twenty twenty-two to March 31st, twenty twenty-three and from April 1, twenty twenty-three to March 31st of twenty twenty-four are both missing. So is it any relationship between the fact that the government is trying to hide the real information from the people? Let us know. How many passports did Galaxy have? How many you've allocated? In the absence of the minister telling us and being transparent, we will have to believe Martinez's claim that he got it from the CEO, that there were six thousand. The minister nor the CEO have not publicly denied the six thousand allocation to Galaxy. We're not talking about what is approved in the infrastructure, in the real estate. And then now come to the infrastructure. The claim by Martinez suggests that there is another seven thousand vowels there. The minister has not addressed this.
Where are the funds? Where the money gone? Where the money gone? Mama if Flabo, we cannot take anymore. Our country cannot take anymore. Our community cannot take anymore. Our young people cannot take anymore. This season of political history will go down in history long after you and I would have been dead as one of the worst governments that we have had in the history of governance in St Lucia. Very often, when we have a good leader, we tend to underestimate how special a good leader is. Sometimes it takes darkness for us to appreciate the light. Sometimes it takes loose elect to cut the lights for us to appreciate how good it is to have electricity. And I want to say to you, ladies and gentlemen, the reason I am fighting so hard to rescue St Lucia is because I know what a good leader is. Because I sat in a cabinet with a good leader. I sat in a cabinet with a man who had the vision for this country. I sat in a cabinet where I saw a leader who disciplined his ministers. Whenever any one of us did anything that was wrong, and the record is there to show that two of my former colleagues were excused from serving the people of St Lucia. And so this is why I cannot accept the level of corruption that's taking place in our country across the board. Whether it is the construction industry, whether it is the carnival, just a little carnival where you put these guys to organize and you hear people claim about corruption. Whether it is jazz, whether it is CIP, whether it is global ports, this is the unprecedented level of corruption that we have seen in the history of our country. Mama if Flabo, it is time for action. We cannot talk anymore. We cannot talk anymore. And so the Labour Party, I feel sorry for them tonight. Because I see them somewhere in Castries, southeast. They say that they have a celebration. And I look at the live to see how enthusiastic their supporters are. And I see they have Missley people there, a hundred and twenty people on the Facebook live. And I asked outside, I said, "How many people are on the live for Flabo?" They say, "Almost five hundred." So you see, Mama if Flabo? You see, Mama if Flabo? You see, Mama if Flabo? This is not even something that we mobilize. We did not even advertise this. We didn't take an ad on DBS. We didn't put out like them. Today, they were supposed to have a march of shame. You all remember that? But they are so ashamed that they cancelled the march of shame. But you know, when we get back into government, we will show them what it's like to celebrate victory. We will show them what it's like to celebrate progress in a country. Because we will not be celebrating a victory for the United Workers' Party. We will be celebrating a victory for the people of St Lucia. So we cannot take anymore. They have lost the plot. They do not understand what this is about. They do not understand why we are so anxious about our passports. They do not understand why we are so ashamed that we have an investor from Saint Kitts who's taking us to court. They do not understand why we need information. They do not understand why we embarrassed to hear a minister say that he needs to ask an investor for permission to tell his people what the account is and what the update is on their own passports. They do not understand that, Mama if Flabo. And which is why we have to fight that much harder, Mama if Flabo, to ensure that we return the United Workers' Party. I want to share with you tonight a cabinet conclusion. Cabinet conclusion, a very simple document. And it's Cabinet Conclusion two hundred and twenty-nine. And it says the National Infrastructure Development Fund. Yeah? And the cabinet considered, it reads, it's dated the twenty-ninth of March, twenty twenty-three. So March last year. And it says Cabinet Considered a memorandum dated the twenty-ninth of March, twenty twenty-three, submitted by the Ministry of Tourism, Investment, Creative Industries, Culture and Information, responsible for the citizenship by investment program and approved the creation of a National Infrastructure Development Fund as a qualifying investment consistent with the following pricing. It says, one, investment sum one hundred thousand US dollars. Standard for a maximum family of four persons. So Mama if Flabo, if the investment sum is one hundred thousand dollars and it says that a family of four can apply by paying a hundred thousand dollars, then how much money did Stevenson King, Philip J. Pierre, Emma Hippelit, Ernest Hillel and the gang in cabinet decide that one passport is for? My math tells me that these guys had our passports on a blown away sale. They had our passports on a Jabba sack. They had our passports on a Jabba sack. They had our passports being sold for 25,000 dollars. Could you imagine? That is what you are worth. While all other countries are selling a minimum passport, they have now said in Dominica, in Grenada, in Antigua, and in all the other countries, a minimum that you can have a CIP application for is now 200,000. Why should Saint Lucia last year sign and agreed in cabinet that the price will be 25,000 dollars for each passport? And you see, when I tell you that they do not understand, and somebody said the flea market, yeah? Why I tell you that they do not understand why you are ashamed? It is because of decisions like these. When I tell you that they do not understand, it is because the egregious nature of all of the things that they continue to do in the CIP program, my brothers and sisters. And so we had a judgment that came to the fore this week. We see that the same MSR media, and you can pick it up, is a public document from the United States District Court of Southern District of Florida. And the case number is 24CV 2492. Now, this is a document, cameraman. If you want to prove to the public that it's a real document, you can zoom in. Flabus don't lie. Flabus bring the authentic documents to government. And so, and so you will remember that the Labour Party and their cronies celebrated when based on a technicality, the judge said that MSR media had applied to subpoena the bank accounts of Galaxy and the former minister, Prime Minister in Saint Kitts. And said that because you did this wrong, I will have to throw out your application for subpoenaing the bank accounts belonging to Galaxy and others. Well, MSR media reapplied and appealed, and now they did it in the proper way. And now the court has ordered that MSR media can now access the information. Every single transaction of Galaxy will now be shown in the US court. And now the real answers will come to the fore. This is not Ernest now trying to accuse Alan Shastny of destroying Saint Lucia. Now we will see the real truth where the money went. Because the court judgment said, the court judgment said this. It says that the bank accounts from Wells Fargo, from Bank of America, and JP Morgan, all of these banks have now been ordered by the court to give information concerning Galaxy's bank account to MSR media. Now you have to ask yourself, while all of this is happening, we see the corporate secretary of CIP has resigned. And we have to ask ourselves whether there's any relation to what has happened and her resignation. Up to now, we do not know whether the chairman is still the chairman or whether he's the henchman. We don't know what is happening because there is no press release. There is no information that they have given us pertaining to whether Mr. Lanthiophalus is still the chairman of CIP. Mr. Minister, we ask you the question. Or do you also need Galaxy permission to tell us whether we have a chairman or we don't have a chairman? We ask you, Mr. Minister. We need to know the facts and the truth. What is happening in the CIP department? We should not have to go and pick up documents from the courts. We should not have to go and read in the international press as to whether our corporate secretary has resigned. We shouldn't have to go to other countries to see whether we have a chairman or we don't have a chairman. Could you imagine we ran Flabu like that? Could you imagine we didn't know if Prudent was in power or not? But you see, in the United Workers' Party, we have our business fixed. We are ready to govern. And when we return, we will govern properly. So CIP is in a mess. And I want to ask Ernest, while I have the time. Ernest, have you now received the information from Galaxy as to whether you have permission? We need to know. We heard from Mr. Martinez that it is 14,000 passports, files that Galaxy have sold, which could be potentially 56,000 passports. It means, Mama if Flabu, that you could have in the next year or even now 56,000 Chinese citizens. And for those of you who have been ringing up my phone and you've been asking me whether they can vote or whether they cannot vote, if they live in Saint Lucia for six months, yes, they can vote. Yes, they can run for an election. Yes, they can come and open a little shop next to your shop. Yes, they can come and work in Saint Lucia, just like you. Yes, they can. And so this is a very serious matter. And that's why you must demand the answers from Ernest. And you must say to Ernest that this is not about Galaxy. This is about your passport. This is about your future. This is about your visa. This is about your banking information. And you need to know. Ernest WTF? It's a where? Well, I heard, I heard a different language that I can't use on this side. But this is the most egregious thing. And this is why I say to you that our country is in crisis. Is it true that there are 50,000 files, sorry, passports, plus passports that are now being sold? My information is, is that the CIP is churning out and processing and processing passports like it's a factory. They are there while they are telling you, the people of Saint Lucia, that you have to take a line. And when you come from View Fort, they tell you your documents are not in line. Now I hear that they are processing people even ahead of the documents coming. And so while they do all of this for the international clientele, for all of the CIP people, they are making it difficult for you, the people of Saint Lucia, to get your passports. And this is why I say to you, Mama if Flabu, that our country is in crisis. Mr. Special Prosecutor, I call on you to investigate the CIP office. The people of Saint Lucia need to know what's going on with their CIP monies. The people of Saint Lucia need reports. Why haven't we gotten the reports as yet? Why haven't Ernest and Philip released the information so that all of us can be in the know? And I'm saying to you, Mama if Flabu, that I have received information that while McLeod and Hiller have been, are two of the people fingered, that there are more people in Saint Lucia who is going down with the CIP scheme. There are more people going down. There are more people who are involved. And that's why you see all of this mass resignation. Because people are beginning to realize that they are in trouble. Hiller has put them in trouble. The Labour Party has put them in trouble. And now we need leadership. We need visionary leadership to guide us out of the trouble that we're in. And so, Mama if Flabu, there is over a billion dollars of your money that's out there. If it is true that there is a billion dollars and more in EC dollars out in the open of your monies, then I'm saying to you that this has to be one of the most important elections that we need to fight. We need to be ready for the battle so that when we return, we will revoke every single passport. Every single passport that has been sold illegally, we will say to them, "You either paid a difference or we will take our passports back." So Mama if Flabu, there is a lot at stake. There is a lot at stake. There's a lot of your money that's out in the wilderness. And so we must make sure that we organize, that we share the live, that we tell people about forums such as these, that we get our government back in so that we can rescue Saint Lucia from the peril that it faces today. So Mama if Flabu, we continue to see the corruption deepens. We continue to see the Labour Party with their secret, with their lies and with their propaganda. We must make sure that it doesn't return. We are so sorry for this country. We just cannot take any more of the corruption, any more of the bad decisions. Mama if Flabu, I want to thank you for tonight. I thank you so very much for coming out and giving us the support. Thank you so very much, Mama if Flabu. We must return Alan Shastny and the United Workers' Party to the helm of government. Thank you. Thank you very much, Senator Fede. What's the date, what is the date of today? Twenty, twenty eighth?
Very early in the year, I heard an announcement that today there will be a march organized by the government. So to celebrate, to celebrate, there will be a march to celebrate. Now I want to ask a question. Is there a march going on right now? You mean another bluff again? Not even that they can deliver? You know, but really truly, you know why that march could not take place? What is it you are celebrating if you have no accomplishments? They made a number of promises that they did not deliver on. They promised jobs. They promised a better standard of living. They promised all kinds of things that we have not seen. Okay? So in the absence of anything to celebrate, they had to cancel the celebration. And but you know, it is for us to celebrate that even they have begun to see the light. And so, ladies and gentlemen, before I bring on the next speaker, the Saint Lucia Labour Party has an MO, a modus operandi. Bluff, allegations, accusations, intimidation, and they have gotten away with it. In the last election, leading up to the last election, they made us believe that Guy was so corrupt that they wanted to get into office to arrest Guy and send him to prison. But you know what is sad? You know what is sad? Many of us Flabus fell for that and believed them. I am hoping, not I'm hoping, the good thing is with the passage of time, the truth has been revealed. Because guess what? In their embarrassment and shame and to buy time, you know what they did? They said they're going to appoint a special prosecutor to take care of people like Guy. Over one year, a special prosecutor is in an office fiddling his fingers, being paid a fat salary at your expense. Up to today, they cannot back up one of the allegations that they are making. They cannot back up one of the allegations that they have made. The truth has been exposed that it was just lies and bluff. We are not falling for that again. But I promise you that I personally will be putting pressure on the United Workers' Party government to make that special prosecutor work. Because while we, while we are here now, we are not just making allegations or just making accusations. Although I suspect by the time you all get into office, some of them will be in jail already. But there's evidence of corruption, not just allegations and accusations. We are hearing about CIP where today our minister responsible for CIP has to ask a agent, a developer in CIP for permission to give you information in your country about your passport. Today, we have the chairman of CIP runaway, the secretary runaway, the CEO is in court, the minister is in court. What is happening? That's not just allegations, that's reality. Okay? Now I am hearing that you have two sitting government ministers who allegedly involved in blackmailing somebody. The two ministers are Joakim, now he was on, on, he was at his meeting there a while ago saying, "You know, I can answer the questions, but you know, I just put in the people first." Well, if you put in the people first, tell the people whether or not you are involved in blackmailing a gentleman. Because Joakim Henry and Richard Frederick are being accused of blackmail. And the prime minister knows about it because it is alleged that the prime minister is the one who put Joakim up to that. That is the kind of cabinet that you have today. And you know, there are a lot of accomplices, you know, that used to be UWP's who joined the merry gang and have to answer. And they have to answer. People like Michael Pilgrim, Mikey, has to come and account for the deeds that he did. That's a former prime minister of this country who went on platform and said all kinds of things about the United Workers' Party. Now things getting hot, he run. Mikey has to tell us why he resign as chairman of housing. Why? Things getting hot, people trying to save their skin. Well, I will tell you. I will send a warning to them. They all can run, but none of them can hide. Because the special prosecutor will finally be put to work. Be careful what you wish for. Be careful what you wish for. Because sometimes the hole that you dig will serve you as your grave. And that is what will happen to them. So today, today, as a former colleague of this gentleman, I have absolutely no reason or reservations about him except for the fact that he is one aggressive representative who, who sees about the interests of his people. And I can say today, you can put all of the representatives of Castries Southeast together, they cannot match the performance of that representative. Now, he is a thorn in their side, so they're trying to get rid of him. And the last thing I want to say before I call this gentleman. In the past, what they have done is bought some of the people who were giving strength to the UWP. But I'm proud and happy to say, this one is not for sale. It's not for sale. And I look forward to the day when some of those accusers will be begging Guy to save their skin. But not even Guy will be able to save their skin. And so, ladies and gentlemen, I now call on the deputy polit-
As I'm speaking to you, the government has not been paying the suppliers of medication to the hospitals and the health centers. I, in fact, I know that legal letters have been written indicating that action will have to be taken if the government does not owe up and pay the suppliers. So the health sector is suffering, whereas you have collected millions of dollars from the citizenry in the name of improving health and security. And our health and our security is at the worst that it has ever been in the history of this country.
Mama if Flabu? Now you know this room really has a lot of energy. You know? It is. It is a day of mixed emotions because we have just seen three years of the worst governance we have ever experienced in the history of Saint Lucia. In my lifetime, and I've been around a few years. Once you pass 50, you've been around for a few years. You agree? Yes. And looking at our sweet Saint Lucia. You know, to be here tonight and to have all our viewers online. You know, sometimes we make such bad decisions in life. Now I want to show you something because I like to show what I see. You see this man there? How, how can anybody give up a leader of this class for an embarrassment? Every time, every time PJP opens his mouth, he embarrasses Saint Lucia. It is not just the Labour Party that he embarrasses. It is St. Lucia that is embarrassed. I mean, I will not even seek to repeat some of the things that he has said. But St. Lucians, we have a sacred document that every one of us must hold dear in this country, and it is our constitution. Without this constitution, we do not have a country. We do not have a democracy. We have nothing to govern and to live by. It is not politicians that govern. It is the constitution of St. Lucia that determines how politicians ought to govern. And I'm saying this because it is important for us to understand that our democracy is at threat by the careless handling of the affairs of this country by this Labour Party government. And we see what's happening in America and we see what's happening in Venezuela. Democracy can be threatened when the people stay quiet and accept the eroding of the rules that govern our society. And so, as we reflect, I'm not worried about the upcoming election. I'm worried about the damage that is being done to St. Lucia today. Election must come. Time never stops. And Flabo must win. So I'm not concerned about that for now. What I am concerned about is what is being done on a daily basis to this country. You know, I try sometimes to understand basic things about us. We have a prime minister in this country. And I did a little poll. I asked about six people that I met from Castries East about the prime minister, a very basic question. Is the prime minister married? I asked a very basic question. And most of the answers was, I don't know, I think so, maybe. Can you imagine? Can you imagine? Ahead of a country, a Christian country at that, a country that is supposed to be governed by rules and has a morality that is above the average morality, that nobody I have spoken to can answer me whether the prime minister of St. Lucia is married or not. You know? And this was very telling to me. Now, I am not the kind of person who probes into people's personal lives. But let me tell you. Every single member of my family has been attacked by the Labour Party. My wife more so than anybody else. My leader, Alan Chasney, I know his wife, I know he has a wife. The whole of St. Lucia knows that he has a wife. Now we have a prime minister, I don't know if he have a boyfriend or a girlfriend. I don't know if he has a wife or a jabal. You know, and the reason why I raise this. When we were in government under the United Workers' Party, Stevenson King was leader, leader by default through the passing of Sir John. And the conversation with the clergy in St. Lucia was that you could not really reside as prime minister and not be married. Is there different standard in St. Lucia today? Because you see, we need to understand that organizations do not rise above their leaders. Businesses do not rise above their leaders. And countries cannot rise above its leader. The leader is the benchmark. That is why I showed you two pictures. And they don't dislike Alan Chasney because of the complexion of his skin. In fact, they wine and dine with people of his complexion more than they wine and dine with people of their own complexion. In fact, they have given more of St. Lucia to people of his complexion than they have to people of their own complexion. So, every St. Lucian, this is not politics we are talking about. The constitution does not discriminate on your religion, your race, your ethnicity, it does not. Every St. Lucian is protected by this constitution. And Alan Chasney has every right that every St. Lucian has. You remember they came with, don't think it was not their intention when the Grenadian prime minister came here and said about where you come from. You know what happened? They found out that a certain parliamentarian within the camp of the Labour Party was not born in St. Lucia. So that is why this was not proceeded with. Because your pame msa v, tut munapati yo, koyo fet. So when word started spreading that there were other people outside of Alan Chasney who was not born here, they kill it. So I want you to understand this. And I'm not attacking Philip J. Pierre on his personal life and what he chooses to do with his personal life, that's up to him. But if you are leading this country, don't lead us by double standards. You know, it cannot be that we don't even know where we stand. We don't know how to answer a basic question about our leader. Is that fair to the people of St. Lucia? After three years in government, we still don't know how to answer a basic question. Now I've always told you. We dealing with serious business. Now. I don't know how I can evaluate Labour without using the Labour Party manifesto. Because whether we want to fault ourselves or not, a man ought to be judged by what he has promised and what he has written. So, on the first page that I will highlight, which is page eight of the manifesto. Now, let me pause to say. According to Newsprint, the lie detector test concluded that Philip J. Pierre is a liar. And not just one liar, you know, more than one. In fact, Tim played a couple of statements on Newsprint when they did the fact check and the lie detector test determined Philip J. Pierre is a liar. Now, I will use their manifesto to prove beyond a shadow of a doubt that Philip J. Pierre is a liar. Now, I want you to observe a couple of things. When men will lie about known issues, can you imagine when they have real issues, what they would do? Now let me ask a simple question. Timothy Harris in St. Kitts. They are trying their best for people not to find out what happened at the banks with CIP. If we have done transactions on behalf of St. Lucia, why should we be afraid of people finding out what was done? Now let me hasten to say. Nobody has had to resign because of Guy Joseph. Nobody has had to answer their name in court because of Guy Joseph, including Guy Joseph. So, who has done wrong? Everybody who has dealt with Ernest Hillel, for some reason or the other, have to answer their name somewhere. Whether at West Indies Cricket, whether at the High Commission in the UK, and don't talk for Minister of CIP. So, now let, let me say something here to us. When you are so, they say, show me your friends and I will tell you who you are. Birds of a feather flock together. So, abreza yokaku ya, he say, wait, you can resign. But those who are resigning, y'all are resigning too late. And they have more, you know. When we come in to deal with GPH, the board members of Slasper, zatka iwepon no hot. When we come to deal with the Banan's land, Mikey Pilgrim, ukai wepon no. John Peters, you will answer your name. Well, we ain't even talking about Richard Frederick. And Reno, you will have to answer your name too. Because I want to know how the board made a decision to sell the land to Reno, yet still when the sale was completed, it was on Reno's daughter's name. So Reno, why you didn't want the land on your name? Was it too glaring? Was it too obvious that something was wrong? So, I am putting the people of St. Lucia on notice. No permanent secretary has been in trouble because of Guy Joseph. And I served two terms in government. Not a single officer in any area that I served, whether it was the Board of Wasko, whether it was the Board of Slasper, nobody has had to resign or answer their name. Because you know what? My integrity is not determined by the accusations of Labour. My integrity is determined by two things. The God that I serve and the moral values that was instilled in me by my parents. You grow up in certain places and your parents don't tolerate certain things. And you grow up with a value system that becomes a guide to your conscience for the rest of your life. And so, people of St. Lucia, in the political arena, there will always be accusations. But these accusations must be founded on facts and truth. Where is the truth? I will tell you how far the Labour Party went. The Labour Party, as they came in, invited the World Bank. Now listen to why they invited the World Bank. Because every contract that was issued from the Ministry of Economic Development was issued to local contractors. And they said something was wrong. How no foreign contractor qualified to get a job during the term that Guy Joseph was Minister for Economic Development. I can tell you, the Chinese applied, they tendered on projects. A company in Dominica, not Dominica St. Vincent, threatened to take us to court and they did take the matter on and they lost. So, they invited the World Bank and they said to the World Bank there was corruption. So the World Bank came to St. Lucia, did an investigation for months. And the people at the World Bank said that is the first time in the history of the World Bank that they have investigated a small country like St. Lucia where the money they spend is insignificant. And can you imagine they were investigating? The person they were investigating did not get the contract that he attended for. That is the level of desperation on the part of the Labour Party to find something that Guy Joseph has done that is wrong. But I keep on telling them, you cannot find what is not there. So, if there's nothing in the bank on CIP, tell them go to the bank, have a field day. I've told them I always declared to Integrity Commission. And if I lied to Integrity Commission, they had the opportunity to take me to court. And the records at Integrity Commission is still there. So you can go and check the records at Integrity Commission and find out. But you see, my problem is not what Labour Party did, you know. My problem is with us Flabos who believe the propaganda, the lies and deception of Labour. So, all of us are paying the price. So I want to say to our Flabo family, families have disagreements. Families may separate from each other for a period of time. But guamun ka tu judu, boafa mi kapliye, ipaka kaxi. We are inviting all our Flabos who deserted us to come back home to the United Workers' Party. You try a thing, it didn't work. I, I, I know things about Stevenson King that I choose not to say. Stevenson King, one thing I know about Flabo. Everybody who is a true Flabo, honored, respected and supported Sir John. There is not a genuine Flabo in this country during the era of Sir John who did not give the overwhelming support to Sir John. And every one of us who knows Stevenson King knows that he never supported Sir John. I'm not, I didn't, I'm not giving you that secondhand information. I'm giving you that firsthand information from Stevenson King himself. And ask him. And people can pretend, you know, but ask him. Why when Sir John died and he was Prime Minister, he was not allowed to give a speech? Now, let's go to evaluating the performance of Labour. On page eight of their manifesto, putting you first, here's what it says. "Our people have largely been turned into second-class citizens while preferential economic support and favors continue to be given by this UWP government to friends and a selected few. As a party, we support foreign investment as a path to economic development. However, we believe and as we have emphasized over the years that it is vital that St. Lucia's be part of the wealth creation of this country by putting you first." Now, who is Galaxy? Now there used to be a gas station in Grozille, in Boadot, as they call Galaxy. Y'all remember that? I assume that was a local business. But the Galaxy we're talking about is not the Galaxy Gas Station. The Galaxy is a Chinese established company. Now watch the hypocrisy of Labour. They tell you Alan brought Galaxy to St. Lucia. We negotiated with Galaxy, 700 passports. You stopped all projects that St. Lucia's were doing. You didn't stop Galaxy, you give them 7,000 instead of 700. Why? But your first page, Mr. Prime Minister Philip J. Pierre, the lie detector test has determined you are a liar. Because you took GPH and you gave them Slasper. Slasper was one of the most profitable entities established by the government of the United Workers' Party under Sir John. Slasper has never failed us. And you heard from Dominic, from making $6.50 on every passenger that landed in St. Lucia on a cruise ship. You now making $1. Now you saw the last cruise ship that was there. If they had 2,000 people, St. Lucia get $2,000 and GPH gets 10. No, yes, two fives, 10, 2,000. So they get 10,000. What has GPH done since they started collecting the revenue? So, so you see, you see what is happening. Now I want to give you more, you know. Here's what they say on the housing. "Consideration will be given to a mix of housing types to maximize the development cost per unit. Single detached units, townhouses, duplexes, quaduplexes, low-rise apartment buildings for freehold and subsidized housing for rent based on tenants' income levels." And if you want to see what low-rise and high-rise buildings are, they have four of them in Denry. That is the only achievement of Labour Party in housing. You remember Richard Frederick and Joakim Henry stood when they were built, when they built a little house in Saroth for a gentleman and you need to go and see the house. They might move out of the house already. Yeah, now, you remember they said they were building a high-rise building in Caldisac? And even the gas station attendant and they gave a date to start, you know. Have they started? Now, now I want to say this to us. Listen to me. Talk is not cheap these days, you know. The kind of money you had to pay Flo and Digi sell. But these fellows talks, I mean, they say even gas station attendants would be able to afford. And look at what they built in Denry. And then the Prime Minister says, "Well, these high-rise buildings are not for people. It is for the poorest of the poor." So the poor people of St. Lucia are not people according to the Labour Party. Okay? So, I want to move on quickly. Because the digital economy, and they spoke about the digital economy. Complete the implementation of all e-government services which started under the Labour Government. Let me tell you, the Labour Party Government was not doing anything in e-government. It was the United Workers' Party under Alan Chasney that started the process of e-governance. For that matter, the program that we launched where you could now pay your driver's license online. You could register your vehicle, you could do all of these things. They have stopped the program. That is what they have done. They have stopped it. Now, you know, how can Philip J. Pierre as Prime Minister? You know, now here's what they said on page nine. "In collaboration with the private sector, transfer some government fixed assets to the private sector with the intention of converting government loan payments into lease rental payments to reduce the government debt obligations." So they want to take state assets, give it to selected private sector people. And then convert it into payments so that they can reduce the debt of government. Yet still, the debt of government for this last year grew by 8.8%, while the economy only grew by 2.2%. So the debt is growing four times. The rate at which the economy is growing. So, I want us to understand. When you put boys to do men's work, that is what? So, he said he was going to make everything available to St. Lucia's because we were not giving St. Lucia's. So how did the ports end up with GPH? And why St. Jude Hospital that was being built by local contractors, local labourers? Today I am hearing there are more than 100 imported workers on the project of St. Jude. Now, now listen to this and I want you to understand. Why is it? You mean a labourer, an unskilled worker you had to bring from outside? And my political leader was asking me a question. He said, "Is the minimum wage applicable to these imported workers?" Or are they paying them below the minimum wage? So now they put the minimum wage at 650. So, they have allowed, and you know they had put labourers. Now I have labourers working for me and I pay them 70 and 80 dollars a day. That is already above the minimum wage. The Labour Party has allowed the contractor and we don't know for sure who the contractor is. We are hearing his Reno, we are hearing his, um, this Saudi Arabian company. We don't know which one is in charge. Lies and propaganda. That is how the Labour Party operates. So foreign workers are building St. Jude while so many people in Viewford sitting on the block and cannot find a job in the south. Philip J. Pierre, there's more, you know. Why is the West Coast Road being built by Namako, a Trinidadian company? When this road was first built back in the early 80s, it was built by a local construction company, CO Williams. To repair the road now, under Stevenson King, local contractors, no local contractor even qualified to tender on the project. Now let me tell you something. Tell them, this is where Guy Joseph is the master. If Guy Joseph was in charge, a local contractor would have qualified to tender on that job. Because this is the government that puts our local people first. The only government in this country who has advanced the cause of St. Lucia's is the United Workers' Party. Who built a middle class in this country. It was Sir John in his time that built a middle class in this country. And it had been devastated by the Labour Party. And Alan Chasney came back. And when we reduced VAT from 15% to 12.5%, we saw a number of small local businesses reemerging in the economy of St. Lucia. You know, here's what they say. They talk about they will expand broadband services. When UWP was in government with the Taiwanese, we were putting broadband services, internet services in all parks and public buildings. And we had started it in a number of areas for free. What has happened? Our internet is the worst that it has ever been in the history of this country. Can you imagine that? We did not get hit by the storm and no internet, no phones, it was chaos. Can you imagine? Can you imagine if we had really gotten hit by the hurricane? What communication would have been in this country? You know, there's so much to judge these fellows on. Now they said on page nine, they were going to revamp CIP. So, I want us to understand. Of course they revamped it. They revamped it for Galaxy. They revamped it for Ernest Hillel. They revamped it for Thaddeus San Juan. And what's the CEO's name? MacLeod? You think running to Washington will save you? I've never had to bring my wife anywhere to plead for me. When I travel with my wife, we go on a holiday to enjoy ourselves. But you go and mess up yourself and you bring in the poor lady up there to plead on your behalf. Let me tell you something. What you wish for somebody that they don't deserve, it will come back to you. If you live in a glass house, don't throw stones. Now, now my savoy wash. I can send stones because I ain't living in no glass house. So I'm sending stones tonight. I'm not afraid because y'all can't find nothing. You know why? Because today, and we are going to hear in due course, how many lawyers firms in St. Lucia. You see the bar association, quiet, quiet, quiet. Is Flabo alone that have to talk? Because y'all know what's going on. But you see, they have a little grease hand passing. So some people don't want to talk. But let me tell you, money does not disappear. Money can always be traced. And if I had all what they say I took, they would have been able to trace it. So I want the law firms to know when your names will be called. Don't come and look for UWP to help you. We fighting the battle for St. Lucia. So, over 400 transactions in the bank in America below the stipulated price. You think the lawyers that were selling it didn't know it was below the stipulated price? So y'all sell it below price and now y'all have to answer your name. Is Flabo y'all want to blame? So Monsieur Hillel, now let me tell you something about people. When a man can make a bobble for 5,000 pounds, what do you think he will do for 5 million US? When a lawyer can come on TV and tell you, "You can take somebody's ticket and go and buy something at Point Seraphin duty-free." And it's okay. What do you think he will do when he see the kind of US dollars that in CIP? But Tato, Tato, this guy y'all want, y'all turn coming. Your turn coming, you know. Because you know what? At the end of the day, we have to understand. This country does not belong to any individual or any group. This country belongs to all of us. And all of us. So, so you want to revamp CIP? Well, why did the secretary resign? Madam Secretary, it too late. It too late. And the others who are there, while y'all still have a chance. Today you hear Lonnie's still chairman, next day, nobody don't know if he's chair, if he's not chair. Why? Maybe he's a bench. He can't be the table, the table too high. Is it a bench or a stool he's, not the chair or the table. Now you know, I want us to understand. You know on page 11, here's what Labour Party said. They are going to increase the number of rooms for hotels by 600. Now, now hear that. I tell these people already, not all of us are stupid. Philip J. Pierre said before the election, the only Prime Minister who believes- the only prime minister who believe that tourists will go back to where it was is Alan Chasney. Why you want to build more hotel rooms? We already have hotel rooms that empty. You said tourism will never get back to where it was. Yet still you want to go and build more hotel rooms. Not, the man does not even believe what he's saying. When a man cannot believe what he's saying and other people believe him, what does that make the other people? You know, there's so much. But my political leader must address you. And I want to say to us, the Labour Party has failed us miserably. You know? No, they have failed St. Lucia. You promised the fishermen, you, fifteen, okay. You promised the fishermen, you are going to remove a dollar fifty for them on the fuel because who the ass who la may, pan she may. So where they passing to sell the fish? I assume it's on the sea they selling the fish. But here's the wickedness of Labour. So they, I don't know, have they removed that dollar fifty? But here's what they did. They added four dollars on every gallon of fuel. So when they removed the one fifty, they still have an advantage of two dollars and fifty cents on the fishermen. And then they put the two and a half percent. Now let me tell you. You see this prime minister? This prime minister is just wicked to the core. Because no man, I mean, I heard Champagne and I heard Dominic, but I must repeat. How can the prime minister sit in cabinet with his cabinet colleagues and give away our port for forty years? And you know, you know in their manifesto, they have that they will develop the port in Viewfort. Now I don't want you to say I tell you things and I can approve it, you know. On page twelve, it says, continue plans for a cruise port in Viewfort and the enhancement of the Castries Cruise Port. It is more than a year that UWP and the people of St. Lucia have been calling on the Philip J. Pierre administration to tell the people of St. Lucia, what is the arrangement with GPH? Because my information says that you cannot develop the port in Viewfort. So you see why Mister Prime Minister, the lie detector test determine again, that's another lie. You see, because we need to understand. Look at another thing they said. They said they are going to pay facility fees for children. Ask any teacher, any principal, have they ever received the allocation of the total amount of facility fees for any school? Do you know what we have been reduced to in St. Lucia? Parents in primary school have to give their children a roll of toilet paper under the Labour Party government. Can you believe that St. Lucia has reached to a stage where our schools cannot even provide the basic needs of a roll of toilet paper for students to go to a toilet? Can you imagine? Can you imagine that we at a stage that children who have to write exams at the end of the school term have to pay for the paper to bring the exam on? How much? Mister Prime Minister Philip J. Pierre, how much more you think you can do to the people of St. Lucia to be satisfied? How can? And I know some parents can afford to buy the roll of toilet paper for their children. But you would not believe that there are some parents who cannot afford to buy a roll of toilet paper. And you know what is happening in the schools? That children have to keep their toilet paper zipped in their bags. Only Labour Party can produce these things. Only Labour Party can create a shortage where there is no shortage. I cannot understand that. Philip J. Pierre must be a special man to be able to create a shortage where no shortage exists. Here's what they said also. They said they are going to be, build climate resilient housing on page twenty-four. Page twenty-four of their manifesto. They said they will build climate resilient housing. Integrate land use planning strategies into the development of climate resilient housing. Yet still the United Workers' Party was building a climate resilient hospital in Viewfort. They stopped it. Why would you stop a climate resilient hospital? And yet still, you taking over two hundred and sixty million dollars. And I, my information on the hospital is the workers who are there don't know what to do. The same things we said that was the problem. So they had a cemetery where they were dumping concrete in Viewfort. Well, is now they dumping concrete in Viewfort? Because they are breaking more walls now in the hospital than they are building walls. Two hundred and sixty million dollars is what they are spending on the hospital. Now you see Mister John Peters? Mister John Peters, it could be twenty years from now, you will answer. You in charge of housing now and you negotiate a big contract for your friend in Trinidad NH to build the most expensive building in St. Lucia. But Mister Peters, your time is coming. Your time is coming. Because you cannot come from Trinidad and come and do that kind of wickedness to the people of St. Lucia. We, the people of St. Lucia, and whether I am in the politics of the United Workers' Party or I am out of the politics of the United Workers' Party, we are going to hold you all accountable as citizens of this country. You know, it cannot be right. And now, Mister Richard Frederick, you run back to Frestone to try and rescue you. Now, I have my issues with Frestone. If I had my way and I'm placing it on record, I have a problem with Frestone going and bail out Richard Frederick and the Labour Party on the housing project. And I put it, I put it on the record tonight. If Guy Joseph was the shareholder that they said, Frestone would never do a day's work for Richard Frederick. But as a dog turns around and eat its vomit, so Richard Frederick has turned around to eat his own vomit and run to Frestone to bail him out of shock and talvan. You see, Flabos, we must stop believing the lies and the propaganda of the St. Lucia Labour Party. It is time to make it right. And we must make it right for St. Lucia. I invite all Flabos, those who did not vote the last election, those who left us and tried the Labour Party. I am inviting everyone back home to the United Workers' Party. And I'm not inviting you just to be part of the United Workers' Party. I am inviting you back because St. Lucia needs you. St. Lucia needs me and St. Lucia needs you. All of us together, we must save our St. Lucia. My last point is, Philip J. Pierre has successfully managed this country to make a dollar worth fifty cents. Philip J. Pierre, si abba Alan Chasney, lenute di ching ching ching. Leuten your dollar, ite vo your dollar. Abba Labour Party, abba Philip J. Pierre, a dollar is worth less than fifty cents today. And I am saying, we can talk our politics. We can give pecan. But St. Lucia is in trouble. St. Lucia must be rescued. And the only hope for this country is Alan Chasney and the United Workers' Party. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Guy, thank you. Guy stood here. Guy stood there all this time. And they come to arrest Guy. You know, I want to say something on this again. Because like I said, we believed, some of us believed the propaganda of the St. Lucia Labour Party. And some of you went out and didn't, voted for them and some of you stayed home and did not vote for us. And in the end, the St. Lucia Labour Party turned around, laughed at you, mocked you and spit in your face and told you, shut up, you lose. And they are right. You lost a lot. You didn't just lose the election. You lost everything that was positive for you in this country. Including the value of your dollar like Guy just mentioned. So the shameless Labour Party, it worked before for them. They are going to try it again. But don't tell me, you will be fooled. You'll be fooled by the same bluff a second time. We have to ensure that this time around, when they come with the propaganda, you defend your party. You defend your leaders, you take our stand, you defend your country and ensure you get rid of them. Because you cannot be fooled twice with the same bluff and tell me you're smart. We have to smarten up. So ladies and gentlemen, we are coming to the end of Flabo Live tonight. But you know, but, but you know Flabo Live can never be complete. Unless and until we had a man himself. And so, and so, ladies and gentlemen, I want you to join me in ensuring that we do what we need to do. To give our dollar its value again. To give our country prosperity again. To bring back development to our country. To improve our standard of living. To make our lives better. To stop all the killings. And to make St. Lucia has the respect and reputation that it once had. Let us give St. Lucia a real prime minister who can represent us and deliver us from the labour pains that has not delivered up to now. Ladies and gentlemen, I welcome the political leader, the leader of the opposition and most importantly, the future prime minister of St. Lucia, the honourable Alan Michael Chasney.
At the end of the day Mister Speaker, end of the day Mister Speaker, it is about how you use scarce resources. And in particular Mister Speaker, when you want to come to the House and speak about the vulnerable. And you want to start crying about the plight of the people on the ground, but meanwhile, you are mismanaging scarce resources of this country Mister Speaker. Everywhere I turn around Mister Speaker, whether it's NLA, whether it's GPH, whether it's Banan's Land, whether it's CIP, wherever I turn around Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, Mister Speaker, Mister Speaker. It has gotten to the point I have to ask the question Mister Speaker. I have to ask the question Mister Speaker. WTF? WTF Mister Speaker? Really? WTF Mister Speaker?
Mama Flabo! I see you all already. I don't even have to ask the question tonight. I see that you all are already. I want to take maybe a different approach than my colleagues. And, and before I begin, I really want to say that I, I want to be, to say thank you to, to my party and the support that you have given me and to my wife and my family. In, in particular, I want to thank my, my executive. The chairpersons of the constituency branches, all the persons who are elected to the executive. But in particular to my two political, deputy political leaders, to the chairman of the party and the chair, and the deputy chairpersons of the, of the party. And there are some real heroes, some people that have shown us a selfless way of putting your country first. And I, I really speak of Spider Montoute, who is a four-time candidate, twice he's been in cabinet. And has shown a level of commitment to this party that I don't think that we've seen the likes of. And I want to say thank you very much Spider for what you've been doing. To my general secretary, she has been a rock of Gibraltar. She's the one who keeps me on the straight and narrow. I'm grateful I didn't have to deal with her in the senate. But I just want to say to her, thank you for your hours. I mean, I, I wake up early in the morning and I speak to her five, five thirty, six o'clock in the morning. And I call her at one o'clock and she wakes up and she says, give me a second and, and we're on to the topic of discussion. So I want to thank her.
and, and we're on to the topic of discussion. So I want to thank her for all that she does for the, for the party. There's a lady that spoke tonight, Brenda Edwin. You know, I know Brenda and I go way, way back with Brenda. I've had my fights with Brenda. I've had my festivities with Brenda. But I want to say that your words tonight really touched me. In particular, in particular, your emphasis on, on the Lord and His word. And to remind us all that as important as we think everything else is, it's really accomplishing what He set us out to do and to take that very seriously. So I want to say thank you very much Brenda for your words tonight. There's some young people whose faces I see here tonight, there's some persons who I know that are vying to be candidates. I'm here tonight and it's just great to see the level of support that's coming forward to the party. I think that the, the chairman, the chairman has on a couple of shows spoken about the level of preparedness of the party. And has spoken about the level of enthusiasm within this United Workers' Party. Has spoken about the increase in membership and the seriousness in which people are taking their responsibilities. But even more importantly, that we see candidates coming up and I'm so happy to see that there is no meh pui. And that people are recognizing that they do want to put themselves forward to represent this great party and to make a difference in the country. But not everybody can be in that position. And all of us have a role to play because we cannot ever do it by ourselves. And so there's a level of maturity and seriousness that's taking place in the party. And I want to thank all those persons who are vying for candidacy for that level of level headness and to put our country first. So the real reason why we are here tonight, and I think that Spider said it very eloquently, that if you are going to celebrate something, then there has to be something that you have accomplished to celebrate. But we're, we've, we're in this position where we're forced to have to evaluate the performance of this Labour Party for the last three years. And I think in going around the island and speaking to people, and it's always the people's voice that resonates the most. It's the, it's the person who's feeling it the most on the ground that sometimes gives you the greatest description or idea of what's taking place. And I can say that the, the term that was, that was used the most described the three years was Mr Shasney, we've been living in three years of misery. Misery. And what is it that we know, what is it that we understand about what's happened in the last three years? Is that the, the costume, the disguise of the Labour Party now is starting to fall off. And terms that were used before that we thought had different meanings, we're now finding out for the first time what they really meant. So putting you first. I think that everybody automatically assumed that meant that, that every single individual in St Lucia was going to be treated equally. And that every single solution would benefit from the windfall. Right? That the country was not going to leave anybody behind. Is that a fair assessment? I think what most people would have thought. Now whether in fact you believe that they could have delivered that, that's a different story. But it's what they, it's what they promised. But we've now understood that what putting you first was, was about protecting the victory. And the victory from who? Who were they protecting the victory for? We thought they were protecting the victory for you, all of us. But we have now found out that they were not protecting the victory for the people. They were not protecting the victory for the country. They were protecting the victory for the comrades. Exactly how you would see a dictatorship work. It is about protecting them and no one else. And we can see that for ourselves. Guy made the mention, who are the people that are benefiting from the contracts? Who are the names that are coming up all the time? All the persons that are being put in jobs in government using your taxpayers' money. And guess what? Square pegs in round holes. It doesn't matter what they can deliver, that's not the issue. It's whether in fact that they can fulfill the promise they made to the comrades, get you a job. Look what's going on in CIP. If you look at Mr Emmanuel's history. I'm, I'm all for supporting a young person to prosper in life. But that young person must also show that he's willing to take on those responsibilities. You're going to take a person that was the general manager of Radio St Lucia? That when we took over Radio St Lucia and he was there, was in debt. The building was a horrible place, it was a big hole in, in the flooring. All of the archives that they spoke about, the patrimony of St Lucia, the history of Radio St Lucia was in a chicken coop outside. That's where it was. When was the last time anybody had heard Radio St Lucia make an announcement over hurricane season? They couldn't. And when he came in and Radio St Lucia was, was, was shut down, he went to get a job where? NBC. And when he couldn't take the pressure at NBC, he went to another company. And today you want to put this person as the CEO of, of the patrimony of St Lucia? Look how he did, he dealt with the patrimony of St Lucia, Radio St Lucia. And he's dealing with your citizenship program the exact same way. We understand that putting you first means secrets, lies and propaganda. We all understand that now. Everything was a secret and everything is a secret. Everything is a lie. And what do they sell us? Propaganda. You know, I was having a discussion with my father and my father said, um, this guy is a crook. I said, no, no, no dad. He's a con man. My father said to me, but what's the difference between a crook and a con man? I said, a crook will steal from you and you know that he's stolen from you. A con man will steal from you but try to convince you he did not steal from you. He may even be convinced you that you were the one who stole it, that you forgot, that you took it. And that's the most dangerous individual. People who can stand up in front of you and lie straight to your face and even convince you that you're the one who didn't get it right. Even though all the numbers are saying something different to you. We've heard terms like, kill it. Don't go there. None of your business. And I need to ask Galaxy. That is how the government responds to you. When they were speaking about transparency and accountability, that is what now it has been the interpretation. So we thought transparency and accountability was that anybody who did anything wrong, if anybody did anything corrupt, if anybody misspent government's assets, they would be held responsible. That's what we all thought. But no, that's not what it meant. It meant, kill it, don't go there. It's none of your business. And I have to go and ask Galaxy. That's what our democracy has come down to. That's the level of accountability that this government has given us in the last three years. I have said, and I believe that people are for the first time genuinely appreciating that this government has betrayed the trust of all of us. And they have lied. And sometimes they have lied in the most cruel and harsh way. They lied about the two and a half percent levy. The government came at a time where we were recovering from Covid economically. The world was going through inflation. The worst thing that a country could have done, particularly a country that's importing inflation, is to make it worse. How do you make inflation worse? Put a tax on it. What you're supposed to be doing is reducing the taxes during a period of inflation in a country that's importing the inflation. No, you put the tax on. And when you were told that it was going to impact the price of food, the first thing that went up was what? KFC. First one. Everybody goes to the grocery stores and sees that the price of food has gone up, but a con man will tell you, nah, that's not, that's not, that's not the two and a half percent tax. That was important. That was going to happen anyway. That has nothing to do with the government. It would not affect food. We told them that inflation would go higher. We said investors would stop coming to St Lucia because it was going to make it too expensive for investors to come here. He said, no, no, no. And he looked every single person in the eye. All of you. He looked into the conscience of every single solution, regardless how poor they are. And said to them, I need you to make a sacrifice. I know how hard it is. But this is for you. This is to be able to improve the healthcare of the country. This was to improve the security of the country. And no matter how the opposition and some other people stood up, including the Chamber of Commerce, to say that the tax was not a good tax and push it off. He said, no, I know my people, my people are going to make that sacrifice because we want a better healthcare system and we all want better security. And then months later to find out that that was never the case. The tax had nothing to do with health and security. The tax had to getting a loan of two hundred million dollars. He had to, he had to put a tax on to generate revenue. And instead of doing that, because he knew if he raised the VAT to fifteen percent, people would be vexed. So he fooled you all and went into your conscience as a con man and to your most vulnerable situation and to ask you to make a sacrifice. That is a cruel betrayal of the trust of the people. He said that Cabot was a bad deal. He convinced all of you in St Lucia that that was the patrimony of St Lucia, land that the government of St Lucia never owned. Land that a development, a golf course development with a hotel that had been approved and had already started when they were in government before. The same lady who was in charge of planning at the time became the president of the National Trust. And yet they would have gone and told you all, Jack cannot. And said, and said that we were going to bankrupt NIC. NIC gave them a loan. And NIC obtained the land as collateral. So the four hundred acres that was valued at ninety million dollars was given to the bank, to NIC as collateral. And NIC would have made money. Let me tell you how they betrayed you. So here now we have the halls of justice. That should have been a development that NIC did. All you have to do is to put the land in the name of NiPRA and for NiPRA to own the building. And NIC would have made almost a hundred and forty-four million dollars in interest to help the pensioners of this country. Instead, they didn't go to tender, they hand-selected a company, agreed to pay that company twice the price to build the building. We were building the police headquarters and the courts for thirty million US dollars. And he's now building the courts for sixty million US dollars. And if you look at the cost of construction in St Lucia, a very high-end office building is five hundred dollars a square foot. This building is going to be twelve hundred dollars a square foot. Now in a typical con man, so the thirty mil, the sixty million dollars is, what is the, to construct the building? Another twenty million dollars is needed to refurbish the building, to put the furniture and all the equipment in. And then now, a hundred and forty-four million dollars to finance the loan for the building. So the building is now going to be two hundred and ninety-two million dollars. And they want to tell you, oh, they're going to give the building back to us in twelve years for how much? One dollar. Okay? That is how much they disrespect the people of St Lucia, that the people of St Lucia would believe that nonsense. You, the taxpayers of the country, are going to pay for that building. And it's going to come out how? They have to pay rent. And the rent is going to be sixteen dollars a square foot. Now remember, these are the same people that said that what we did at the Dyerham Mall has become the most expensive rent in St Lucia. The rent is four dollars. But you see, I know how Labour thinks. So when Richard Frederick cannot come after me, he goes after my family. So you want to go after my father? A man who has dedicated himself to St Lucia? A man, a man that has invested everything that he's made here in St Lucia? A man that has hired thousands and thousands of people in St Lucia on a yearly basis? A man who has given shares in his businesses? The rent for these buildings go back to when Sir John was in government before nineteen ninety-seven. But here it is, so here it is. It's okay for Labour to go out today and justify taking the taxpayers' money of this country to give to a foreign contractor. And that same contracting firm, if you go and do your homework, you'll find out the last two years in Trinidad, they've lost millions and millions and millions of dollars. So it's St Lucia now that's coming to be the ATM machine, they said that St Lucia was the, that's where the ATM machine is. Okay? And they're going to come in now and charge sixteen dollars a square foot. And my father is renting space in these buildings for two dollars and seventy-five cents. If I'm not mistaken, the rent my father is charging here is less than the plywood shops that he put in the print tree. I'm trying right. Okay? But that's what they don't want to talk to you about. That's where we talk about the lies. The la, the secrets, the lies and the propaganda. They don't want you to know all those things. Rodney Bay Highway. Stevenson King was the Minister of Infrastructure. He said he did not know anything about the highway. You see lie, look lie. The billboard is still up. You can go and see the billboard and see who was overseeing the project. The Ministry of Infrastructure. Who moved around about from MJI to Lattret? Okay? So here it is, that Fresh Start was doing a project during Covid. And I have to say that, the reason why we wanted to build roads during the period of Covid was for two reasons. We were focused on getting tourists back and getting the economy going, but it was going to take time. So we gave people jobs. Every single little contractor and big contractor had a job. Everybody who had a truck, everybody who had a baku, anybody who had a pick fork, anybody who had a shovel, anybody who could do anything got a job. There was no- anybody who had a shovel, anybody who could do anything got a job. There was no discrimination. There was no, nothing of that taking place. And the second reason, I want to ask you the question. There was no traffic. The best time to go and do all of the roads is then. But I don't expect Labour Party to have that kind of common sense. No, what did they tell you? They told y'all, y'all can't eat roads. As if we don't want roads, that because all of a sudden we have COVID and the economy is contracted, it's never going to recover. United Workers' Party can always see into the future. United Workers' Party will always do the right thing for St. Lucia. So the contract was for $15 million, a fixed contract. What a fixed contract means is that regardless of what happens, what the price of the inputs are, the government is only going to pay you $15 million. And the contract is you must deliver the road as we said. So two roundabouts. Expand it to four lanes, put in a median like how we have on the Castries Highway. Sidewalks. And a pedestrian overpass for $15 million. And remember, the Bua Dwan Bridge was built for $14 million. Just keep that in your mind, huh? And that Bua Dwan Bridge was built years before. Okay? So you're doing it for $15 million. Stevenson King knew that there was no bubble. But he went and he went on the platform and said that Guy Joseph was a thief. How Guy Joseph involved in that? Oh, that's right, because he said that Guy Joseph owns the shares. But we now know that if Guy Joseph had the shares, that they were, Fresh Start would not be doing the work now. Okay? So they stopped the project. The contractor exercised his right and said, well, 90 days has gone by. If you cannot tell me what you're going to do, I cannot waste my time by having all my equipment and being here. So the contract was cancelled. So what did they do? The Ministry of Infrastructure now has to go in and assess the work that had been done. So the contractor can be paid for the work that was done. Okay? Not, no longer just the $15 million. The work that was done came out to $21 million. And it was not complete, huh? And it was not complete. So now the government has to pay $21 million. And now find a new contractor to be able to finish the work, which is probably gonna cost another $15 million. Because you know with this government, what they're gonna tell you? Supply chain issues, imported inflation and blah blah blah. Oh, wait, wait, wait a second. And it's gonna take twice as long to complete because we cannot work in the rain. St. Jude's Hospital. They told you, they told us that we had a box. But yet when you go to Marknik, the hospital is a, everywhere you go in the world, a hospital is a. And the box is a box to protect people. To provide proper services. When you go to, when you go to, when you go, when you go to Millennium Heights, the building is what? A box. And some people were stupid so to believe that there was something wrong. And we kept on saying, look, you don't need to be experienced to go to the old St. Jude's and see that that cannot be a hospital. It cannot be. And so the plan of United Workers' Party was to convert the old building into a university. Think of it, look at it. It looks like a university. And have a proper hospital downstairs for our local people and an international hospital upstairs. And that we would share the cost together. So the international hospital and the local hospital would share the cost of the MRI machines and the labs, electricity, and even share some of the staff to make healthcare more affordable for solutions. HIA Airport. So he told you that it's only United Workers' Party that would continue building the airport. Because the money to pay for the airport was coming from tourism. And that we're the only persons who believe that tourism would recover. Today, as we speak, they have $250 million in the lockbox that came from tourism. That means that we have more than half the money that we need. And this is what we kept on saying to them. Do not give your airport to somebody outside. Control it yourself. The Taiwanese gave us a loan. 20 years. One and a half percent above Labour, capped at 4%. So it means the interest rate cannot go past 4%. And if you do better and you're able to pay off the loan earlier, that means the remaining money in the lockbox belongs to the people of St. Lucia and which we can do other things. But he came in and he told you, because you see, all of a sudden when he came in, what he was telling us, he couldn't find. So now he had to find another excuse. So he said to you, he's never been anywhere in the world where he sees people drive up to the second floor of an airport. So you see, again, United Workers' Party planning for the future. The airport is going to grow. We're gonna get over a million passengers coming into that, that airport. So you have to divide departures from arrivals. You can't have both set of cars coming down. And when you drop off people downstairs, they're going between the people who are arriving and then they have to go in an elevator and escalator to go upstairs. Build your road. We moved the airport terminal. So we would not have to break down the old terminal. And use the old terminal now for the cruise ships. So when the cruise ship passengers arrive, instead of them going into the brand-new terminal and clog up the place, they come into their own terminal and check into the cruise ship right there. We would become the best home port in the South. 75, 75,000 passengers coming through to connect on a cruise ship, paying $100 each, will generate more money to St. Lucia than a million passengers coming in and paying $5.50. 75,000. Plus, all the young people in the South that wanted jobs. The opportunity to develop tours in the South. As I said, Labour Party should have built the cruise ship terminal in Viewfort all the way back in 1997. And here it is now, three terms have gone by. They're in their third term, sorry, their fourth term. And they still haven't been, in fact, they did the worst thing to the people in the South. They stopped it and said, we're not going to allow the development to go through in order to put all the business in Castries now. When people ask me, why would you not want to expand Castries Port? I said, because we're building 3,000 new hotel rooms up north. Think of it. Cabot. Sandals Grand Expansion. The Rex Properties Expansion. Mont Piedmont, the shock, the, the new courtyard going up, plus all of the Airbnbs. So if you're gonna put all of that activity up north, why on earth would you wanna bring more cruise ship passengers into Castries? It makes no sense. But that is when you have a government that is not putting people first, but they're putting themselves first. Because when you look at the GPH deal, you have to ask yourself, what? What's going on? Now, Guy did not tell you the full details. Because Guy is saying to you, and he's right. If we are getting $6.50 now and we're only gonna get a dollar, we've lost $5.50. But the deal that they have is that they're going to increase the tax to the cruise ships to $12. So the government of St. Lucia is going to get $1. And they're getting 11. And so they're paying off the loan for $20 million, which Slaspa had already been paying off. Okay? Because the money they were collecting was using to pay off the loan. And all they're going to do is spend another $30 million. So that means they, they, I can't even say it's 50 million, because really it's 30 million of new money. And they're going to get 500 million US dollars. So what, what was in it for us? We, we have been defrauded, we have been robbed of 450 million US dollars in this country? Money that could have gone into healthcare and education and into roads in building up village tourism and expanding our economy and growing everything. But why on earth? So guess what? We have to speculate. So when you see a person who is a comrade getting the job as the CEO, somebody who was working at Slaspa, listen to this carefully. A person who was working at Slaspa and sat at the table and negotiated with GPH as soon as the deal was signed, got a job with GPH. That makes sense? That Lisa Joaquin would be hired to do the PR. Now, those are the things, those are the things that we know of. But we know that this is a government of secrets, lies and propaganda. They lied about debt. The government used to say, we're coming, we're coming to the house to borrow money. In the first three years, in the first three years of government, we borrowed $100 million a year. $100 million a year is what we borrowed. We grew the economy. We reduced unemployment. We invested $30 million a year into infrastructure. We invested $10 million, $10 million EC dollars a year into refurbishing schools. Okay? And we only borrowed $100 million a year. During COVID, when the economy contracted by 20% and government's revenue dropped by 20% or 30%, we borrowed $330 million to be able to pay salaries and to keep the government running. This year, this government, where revenue today is higher than it was in 2019. Okay? By over $100 million higher. Government's revenue. And they've turned around and borrowed $380 million. And you have to ask yourself, if we're living in a period of misery, where's all this money going? WTF? Where's the funds?
Where is the money?
We don't know. This is a government that said they were going to be focused on transparency. They were gonna be focused on following the rule of law. But what did we see? They came to the house and went to the CCJ, something as important as the CCJ, and denied the people the right of their own say. They know better. All of you, all of us, because I'm included, were wearing short pants and they're the ones wearing the, the long pants. We can't make that decision for ourselves. I have no problem in going to the CCJ, but I, I honestly believe it's a decision that the people of this country are entitled to. Especially, especially when the constitution was amended because they said that there was a typo. Yet, in all the other OECD countries, there has to be a referendum. So it's only one typographical error in St. Lucia. That makes sense to you? When they came in, court cases against Christopher Hunt, the court case against Erder's Hiller. Guess what they did? Kill it. Kill it. Don't go there. None of your business. That's what they told you. They tried to silence the opposition's voice in parliament. The first thing was to say, I can't get paid. Not their decision. Then they said, they're gonna put me through, be disciplined. But they wanted to decide how the disciplinary action was gonna take place. They wanted to go away from my constitutional right to be represented. I had to go to court to defend myself. They then tried to suspend me from the House indefinitely. I had to go to court. And then now, the court cases that we had, the judge accused the government of political interference. Especially the Attorney General. And what happened? They moved the judge. And here we are, more than a year has passed by. No new judge has been assigned to the cases. No new judges. Because you know what? We don't matter. They get to do what they want, because whatever they say is the right way. We have a situation right now with the Commissioner of Police and the Deputy Commissioner. I'm hoping that that's gonna get resolved. So let me say this to you. A lot of things have been covered here tonight. But here's what I've seen. In three years, I have seen a trail of destruction and corruption. I've seen unlawful and illegal actions. We've seen jobs for the comrades. We've seen a double standard. We've seen oppressive economic policies. We've seen secrets, lies and propaganda. You see that the only priority is in protecting the victory, not the people and not St. Lucia. So I wanna remind us, for those who want to be silenced, I want to remind you, in 2021 in the elections, the SLP got 50% of the votes. But they got 77% of the seats, 13 seats. United Workers' Party got 42% of the vote. And we got 11% of the seats, or two. The two independents got 6% of the vote and got 11% of the seats, or two seats. Okay? We have every right to make sure that the 42% of the people. No, not yet. That the voice of the 42% of the people is not silenced. And we must also remember, 50% of the people of St. Lucia did not vote. Now, how did that happen? How did we lose? We lost because the seeds of doubt, doubt were planted. And those seeds were built on lies, hypocrisy and deceit. We had people who dressed in blue, who pretended to be patriots. We had people willing to do anything or say anything to win. We saw alliances of self-serving people who would not put their country first. So three years later, three years later, we can see the difference between a party that had a plan versus a party that was beating pants. We see a party of integrity and workers committed to building versus a party of bluffers and corruption. Look at what UTP did in the first three years and compare it to what we have today. In three years, we grew the economy every year, reduced unemployment, reduced crime, reduced borrowing and debt to the GDP. Recorded the highest levels of foreign direct investment in the country. We put $10 million a year. We put ten million dollars a year into school repairs, thirty million dollars a year into road repairs. And we modernized fourteen healthcare centers. Compare that to what has happened in the last three years. Compare, compare how both parties handled Covid. On the United Workers' Party, there was eighty-eight deaths. And up until the point the Labour Party had their march, there was none. So it was only after the march that we saw an outbreak. Let's not forget that. We now can look back and ask ourselves, who had the better plan for recovery for Saint Lucia? So I want to say this to all our viewers tonight, all the persons in the diaspora and to you here are my family. United Workers' Party is stronger and more united than ever. We will not be deterred and we will continue the journey to build a better and more prosperous Saint Lucia. We have recommitted ourselves to the ideals of democracy and the rule of law. To peace and mutual respect both here and abroad. To a globally competitive education system. To affordable, quality healthcare. A safe and just country. A strong economy to provide equal opportunities for all. So I, as your political leader, am asking tonight, all of you who have supported the party in the past and who did not vote in the last election for whatever reason, including those who were confused by the propaganda and the acts of deceit. If you want to rescue Saint Lucia, it's time to stand united again. It's time for you to come back to your family. It's time for you to come home to the United Workers' Party. Let us all come together. Let's be reunited as one. Let us stand united to say to this desperate government, to stand up to this desperate government. Let us stand united and say no to victimization and threats against citizens. Let us stand united and say no to corruption. Let us stand united and say no to this oppressive two and a half percent levy. Let us stand united and say no to the GPH deal. Let us stand united and demand to know where the funds are from our CIP program. Where are the funds from our St Jude's? Where are the funds from our HIA Airport? Where are the funds from the Banan's Land? Where are the funds from the NLA? And where are the funds from the Halls of Justice? Let us stand united and say enough is enough from Richard Frederick. It's time, it's time that we pray and stand, and stand united. I'm going to repeat this again. It is time for us to collectively pray and to stand united so that we can help the most vulnerable in our society. To help the vendors. We need to stand up for the Fisher folk. We need to stand up for the farmers of this country. We need to stand up for those who cannot afford healthcare. We need to stand up for those who are struggling to make ends meet. For those who have lost family or friends due to crime. For those who feel forgotten. It's time that we pray and stand up for our youth and for our elderly. It's time that we stand up and protect our future and our patrimony of this country. So I say to all of us here tonight, let us stand together to protect the reputation of Saint Lucia. Let us remind the world that we value our democracy and we're prepared to fight for it. Mama Flambo. All Saint Lucians. It's time to save our Saint Lucia. It's time, it's time, it's time. It is time. It is time for action in Saint Lucia. And I want to remind all of us tonight. Change in Saint Lucia cannot wait and we need action. Thank you very much.
Yes, ladies and gentlemen. A man who can stand up and talk and a man who has proven that he has a vision to bring us back on path to progress and development. Ladies and gentlemen, we have come to the end of Flabu Live. This was the first, but it will not be the last. I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out. I want to thank all of those who join us online. I mean, imagine we in opposition and I was just quarreling with Dominic about the lack of advertisement of this event. And the Liberal Party who's in government with all their PR people from all the media houses that did their duty work for them, they were only able to muster a hundred and something people online. The United Workers' Party came close to six hundred people on this level. And that tells you something. That tells you something. But let, let everyone know that they can go online on Facebook and so on to view what took place here tonight and see the energy, see how ready we are and let them know that it is time for action. So I want to thank all the speakers and ladies and gentlemen, the fight has just begun. I want to thank our technical people. That's not GPS, I want to thank our, our technical people. And ladies and gentlemen, I want to invite you to keep tuned, keep in touch. We have, we have our Round Table on Thursdays. Instead, instead of listening to other programs on Thursdays, make sure you tune in to Round Table. That's where you get something enriching and something enlightening. We also have Meet the Opposition on a Thursday morning. You can tune to Sky FM throughout the week. And of course, we will be getting more and more of the United Workers' Party as we go on. So ladies and gentlemen, after three years of hard labor, enough is enough. I want to thank you and we'll keep the fight going.